All right, sorry for the delay, everybody.
All right, I think we we had just introduced the architect and he was previously qualified, I believe, by the board. So I think we can just go right into his testimony if that's all right.
Uh, let's just check if his license is current being that we're in July now.
Yes, my last is current.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. You're qualified.
And I'll just swear a minute, all right?
Sure.
And do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Carlo Frigelli.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um. All right, so Carlo, I'll just go over, I think we could just go over the changes that we made since the last meeting. And then, of course, if there's anything else you want to add or the board wants to ask you, they can. The Maggie O'Neill Historic Preservation had some conditions of approval. You know, we we do agree to the three conditions of approval that she stated in her in her letter. One of them was that we would revise the cornice and window lintel and sills on the existing and proposed drawings to accurately depict the existing conditions and the proposed restoration. We've done that now correctly, but we've revised the cornice and window lintel and cells.
Yes.
Are you able to share your screen?
Yeah, so I'm on my iPad. I did the test earlier. Everything was working fine. Under the circumstances, I hope I'm not adding additional technical trouble, but we'll give it a shot. Okay. All right, let me know if you do see my screen.
We can, yes.
Okay, these are screenshots of a PDF, so if the resolution is not optimal, I apologize, but should be sufficient to portray what needs to be done. I'll scroll quickly through these are the original plans that we discussed demolition, interior layouts and whatnot. Of course, if you have questions, stop me, but all this was discussed in the previous meeting. Here you can see, and I'll do my best to zoom in, we've added, and again, it's a little low resolution, as I mentioned, but we've added the the lentils and cornice details as required, so all that is added in. We then went ahead and, again, I'm zooming in, revised the front, which was the issue with the parking. We set it back, gave more room for sidewalk, added more grass, created a knee wall and changing some of the paving and grass as well. These, I think, were the last issues presented last time. There's a bit of a of a zoomed in version as well, which hopefully is showing up for you guys. You can also see we've added more detail on the 3D model as well to reflect the current conditions of the cornice. And I believe that's what we were asked to do.
Okay, just uh, just going into your prints here, you have that paper walkway is now six foot, correct? At the the slimmest portion on the sidewalk?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Okay, um, yeah, I have no other questions. Anybody else? Nope. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else from you?
That's it. That concludes the presentation.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Mr. Try to move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and second, a public is closed. Tim, anything you want to add?
Um, Maggie O'Neill and myself reviewed the resubmitted plans. Maggie approved of the plan changes. I approved changes of moving any ability for there to be a parking space in the front of the building. Beyond that, this application has no, they're not requesting any variances as of right. Planning approves of the application and is currently shown. And then I would ask that Mr. Chestine just agrees to Maggie's conditions in her memo and my staff conditions in my memo. And we can put it to move on.
Do, absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion then at this time to approve case P two two dash zero two one that's presented to our board here tonight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
I, all right.
Commissioner Torres.
So I want to thank the architect for the nice job we did in the front and and in the council, you know, be patient with us and she had conference that we were having the last time and really doing a good job this time. Get that, therefore, I wish you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Gongada.
So just for the record, I just want to note that I was not present for the June 28th meeting, but I read the transcripts that was sent to me from from the planning department, and so my vote is I.
And Commissioner DeCore.
Tim, before we call Commissioner DeCore, we're looking into his reappointment letter. His term expired on June 30th. And we're trying to find a reappointment letter. So, Harkesh, it's okay. I don't know if it's appropriate that that we have not voted until we get a verification on the letter.
Perfect.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi, and thank you, guys. Thank you for coming back with what we wanted. Unfortunately, I was looking at an old print on your web on our city website and I think I called you every name in the book in the last few days, but this is exactly what we want, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. All favor motion passes with staff conditions and HPC divisions.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to new business. Item nine on the agenda is case P two two dash zero nine five is a preliminary and final major subdivision with C variances for 195 Hudson Street and 215 Hudson Street.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley. On behalf of the applicant, I'd ask that before proceeding that my the team be promoted as panelists. There's there's a number of individuals that are part of the team, Eric Vermillion, oh, you have Ed Shim here. Eric Baloo, Joe Malillo, Ed Colling, Gary Dean, and Scott Herrick is our licensed architect.
And apologies if I missed it, but just wanted to ask that we hear case nine and 10 simultaneously. It's a subdivision is one of the is number nine. And then 10 is the site plan.
Okay, counsel, you're okay with that? You're involved at once? And obviously, we will take separate on those. Okay, so at the same time, let's also call item 10 is case P two two dash zero nine four. They preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for 191 to 201 Hudson Street.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and then as an administrative function, we, although we're presenting both together, we did provide separate public notices for each each agenda item, so I'd ask that they be reviewed and marked into evidence.
Thank you, Council Chairman. As you can tell, I'm bouncing back and forth because the camera is not functioning on my computer, so I'm at another station, however, I have all of the necessary emails and documents, et cetera, et cetera, on my desktop, so if everyone could just bear with that fact. That being said, Chairman, I am to receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to case P two two dash zero nine five here in the city. All does appear to be in order. We can mark it as A1 for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Okay, most of receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing for P two two dash zero nine four. That as well appears to be in order, and we can mark that as A1 for the record under that document.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna give an overview of the project, but in the meantime, I don't see Eric Vermillion up here yet. I don't know if he was promoted. And Eric, if you could maybe raise your hand if you're you're out there.
Let me see if I see him in the attendee list.
Is there concrete answered him?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we see that hammer is that we could move that hand.
Let's see. Do we have him up here?
Nice, we'll see the hand up.
One moment.
Nope, I see him.
Okay, very good.
Great. Okay, so thank you. So I know we have a a long night tonight before the board, so I'll get right into it. This is, we're very excited about bringing this project before the board. We think it's another signature project for Jersey City and here in the waterfront. This has been for the members who were not part, I'm not sure who was part of the board 10 years ago, but this has been in the making for for about 10 years, and I say that because this is really phase two of of what was phase phase two of an overall project and part of master plan amendments that were made in 2012 to the to the redevelopment plan. And what that proposed back in 2012 was what we all see as Herbie One that that's downtown. And at at that time, this was all one lot, and we subdivided that lot to create two development lots and what is now an extension of Bay Street. So this is all envisioned as as part of that and just a continuation now of of the ultimate goal and the ultimate phasing of the development. Now, this this development before you tonight involves a subdivision, which you'll see during the presentation is really just a lot line adjustment along Bay Street as we're we're creating, we're making Bay Street a little bit wider. And then the the new development will would be an eight storey tower with well, a tower base and 69 story towers with 1,606 units. And the interesting kind of concept or or part of this project is we're we're also proposing up to 164 hotel units within the two towers, and we, you know, will address that as part of the presentation, too. It'll have up to 200, well, we'll have parking for 272 vehicles with a valet option option we're asking for for up to 500 parking spaces. And then you'll see there's retail uses on the ground floor along with a health club that extends up that has its own deck as as part of the health club experience, if you will. And we're really dressing up the plaza here between this proposed project and and the Plaza Five building. So kind of an overview, why do you see four lots on this presentation? It's it's really consists of or does consist of the Bay Street, which is a private street now and will remain as a private street. That's being widened somewhat. We have the development lot that we're creating as part of the subdivision. We have Hudson Street is involved as well as as another lot because we're making landscaping improvements along Hudson Street. And then the Plaza Five property is involved because the project proposes making extensive improvements between the existing Harbor Side Plaza Five building and this new project. Now, we are asking for some deviations as as noted on on the the agenda. These are all deviations and design waivers that are similar to what was requested and approved as part of Herbie One. They the deviation related to the to the subdivision is is the minimum lot area. And that minimum lot area is the the street. So we'll address that during the presentation. And then you have a deviation for the number of stories within the permitted height. We're we're permitted to in this zone to up to 800 feet. We are well below that. But we are requesting a variance for additional stories similar to what was requested and approved in Herbie One. There's also requests for some relief from the forestry standards, and we will show you how that that fits into the overall project, and there's some utility conflicts along Green Street, but we believe we're we're working consistent with the intent there as we are. We are still, there's a lot of landscaping improvements here. The other, we we call them design waivers that we are requesting in the, I know the agenda lists them as variances, but these this is relief we're requesting from the design standards for the building within the redevelopment plan. And you'll see, you know, during the presentation, we'll address each one of those, but I, in in summary, they're they're similar to to what was requested for Herbie One as well because of the the architectural scheme, as you see in the rendering that's before you. We're it's consistent, but it's different. So we'll we'll address that during the presentation. And then just lastly, this just kind of sort of board knows if if the project's approved, it is it is kind of a phase two, but we're, you know, we talked internally, what it would be is kind of a rolling phase, and I I say that because the idea would be when if approved, that you would build out the base and you would build the first tower. And then, once that tower is topped off, then you kind of move on to the next tower. So there's a sequencing here, but it's it's not being presented as as, you know, phase two, phase three. It's it's presenting as as a a single phase, but but kind of, you know, different stations throughout that phase, if you will. So, that being said, that's kind of the overview. I just want to, so the overview of the project is, as you see, that if you're looking at this rendering, the Herbie One is on the right. I'm I'm sure all the commissioners know that, but just just if if anybody's looking or looking from the public and is not familiar with the the project. And and the two towers on the left are what be or what is being proposed tonight. So I have a number of witnesses tonight to to take you through this. That what I'd first like to do is bring up the three architects. I'm not going to present three architects, but what I do have is is Eric Vermillion is our kind of design and concept arch architect from concrete. We also have Scott Herrick is our New Jersey licensed architect for the for the plans, and then Ed Shim is our project architect, and my thought is to bring them up all now to and have them sworn in so we can proceed with them as we go along.
Thank you, counsel, and let's let the record show we don't have a reappointment apparently for Commissioner Duckworth, so he won't be able to vote tonight, and he is going to leave.
All right, so Chuck, you said Eric, Scott, and Ed, correct?
Ed Shim, Eric Vermillion, Scott Herrick, and Ed Shim.
All right, great. I see Scott, I see Ed. And I see Eric. All right, great. If all three of you could raise your right hand, I'll just swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
And then Ed, Scott, Eric, if you can all just state and spell your names, please.
Ed Shim, E D S H I M, as Mary.
Eric Jan Vermellen, E R I K J A N, and then V E R M E U L E N.
And I'm Scott Herrick. Last name is H E R R I C K.
Thanks, guys.
And maybe if I could just start with Mr. Herrick, since he's the licensed architect in New Jersey. Scott, if you, you know, could you give the the board the benefit of your professional and educational experience in that that, you know, you're licensed in New Jersey, and it is in good standing as of today?
Um, yes, I was trained at Penn State in the architectural engineering program. I was originally licensed in New York in 1989. I got my New Jersey license about seven years ago, and I last provided testimony to this board probably four years ago, 2018, July 2018.
I was, I thought I recognized the name and your license is current tonight, correct?
It is, it is current, yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified then.
Thank you. And then I return to Mr. Shim. Mr. Mr. Shim is the project architect, and he's appeared many times before this board on numerous projects, so I I did.
So let's, yeah, let's just confirm that Mr. Shim's license is current tonight.
Yes, I I am a licensed architect in New York, not in New Jersey, and thus under the supervision of Scott Herrick.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Okay, and then Eric Vermillion, Vermillion. Again, Eric has has appeared before this board many times with Herbie One, and and he was the architect for Herbie, Journal Square Herbie as well. This board probably remembers that because it wasn't too long ago, but he he brings his his design and concepts, you know, from really across the world. So, you know, we're offering him as an expert in architecture, but again, Mr. Herrick is the licensed architect overseeing the project.
Okay, so Mr. Vermilla, I'm sorry, with the name of Vermillion. You are not licensed in New Jersey, correct?
I'm not licensed in New Jersey, no.
Okay, so Mr. Herrick is working under your direction.
Correct.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. You're qualified then.
Okay, so then we want to, you know, jump jump into it as Eric is is going to walk us through the the project, a little bit of the history that I talked about with the master plan and how how this is integrated with the the initial phase of Herbie One and how it is developing now into what's be before this board tonight. And actually, before, sorry, before we go into this, we have a slide deck that this is page one of it, and I'd ask that that be marked in as, I think it's A3 now as part of this.
I think we did A1 as all the notices together, and then this.
Okay.
And we mark A1 for each one, so counsel, we're going to use these for both?
Yeah, we'll use them for both.
So let's mark this as A2 on each of the dockets, and that's how we'll proceed unless, for some reason, we have only one on one of the dockets, but we'll duplicate them on both dockets for purposes of the record.
Okay. And Eric, what's just been marked as A2, could you just describe it that is, I guess the question is, is this a slide deck that was prepared by you?
This is prepared by us, yes.
Okay, and how many how many sheets are within this deck, if you if you recall?
I think it's 47 or 42.
Okay.
If you want to know for sure, I can flip back.
It's it's 47 total.
It's 47, yeah, it's 47. Sorry, I should have given you a leading question there.
And counsel, you'll provide this at the end of the testimony for purposes of the record?
Yes, we will.
Very good. So A2 on both dockets is a 47 slide slideshow presentation. It's entitled Jersey City, Herbie Phase Two. And it is undated.
Okay, so Eric, let's, if you could walk us through this.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, commissioners. I think I've met Tichet Lee most of you also a couple of months ago on the SciTech City project. Also in that project, the same as these and the Journal Square, we work closely together with H O W. Being the architect of record and over the years that have proven to be a successful combination. Indeed, what Chuck said, so the tower here on the right is the existing tower, phase one, that got that opened up in 2017. And we're now talking about phase two, which are these two additional towers. Located in the Harborside Plaza area, right opposite the the light rail station and also on walking distance from Exchange Place Newport Station as well as Grove Street. Pet Station is, you know, this is a super connected residential location for people to to live. Zooming in, we have on the West Side Green Street, on the South Side Plaza Five, on the East Side Hudson Street, on the North Side of the Phase Two part of a project Bay Street. And then north of that, the the Phase One project that opened up in 2017. Some images from the direct surroundings, so this is the current building, phase one. Opposite it, we, there is a large parking lot that sits between Plaza Five and our building Phase One. A large parking lot that will then now be replaced by the Phase Two development. And here you can see the Phase One development seen from Hudson Street. And what you will find here on the left is actually the green strip that leads from, let's say, Harborside Atrium towards Morgan Street, which is an important pedestrian connection, which is something that we, of course, keep and further enhance in our design. This is a part of the approved master plan in 2000 of 2012. So here on the top, the Phase One of the project with Tower A that got executed and opened in 2017. Bay Street, which we, you know, in the in the master plan, you know, like created as an extension of the other part of Bay Street to make the connection to Hudson Street. And of course, the green strip here on the south at Plaza Five. And you see here in the Phase Two part, Tower B and Tower C. And obviously, the plan that we're now presenting is consistent with the already approved master plan of 2012. I want to take you quickly through the architectural concept and and the whole ideas behind it. A little bit in a step-by-step manner. So here on the right side is the existing Jersey, Herbie Jersey City Phase One Tower. On the left side, Plaza Five, in the back here, Green Street, and here to front, Hudson Street with the light rail station here right in front of us. And dotted in red is, let's say, the outline of or the footprint of the Phase Two part of the project. And what we feel what's important within all our projects, but Herbie specifically, is that we want to create a building that is open and inviting. So where many residential projects are almost private fortress, we really want to make a strong connection to the streetscape, to the public, to the neighborhood, and have several, you know, like moments in the building that are open to the public and that, you know, people from outside of the building also can use. And one important aspect within that idea is is the cafe that we are placing here in the in an prominent location on the southeast corner, facing the Harborside Atrium, where a lot of people, you know, walking in and out, facing the green strip and the pedestrian people that will be walking there and opposite the light rail station. So we create a public accessible cafe, so not only for the residents, but definitely also for the neighborhoods to use and to interact with the rest of the people living in the building. Not only the cafe, we have, as much as we could, created an open and public accessible ground floor with retail spaces. Retail spaces along Bay Street opposite the retail that we already have in the Herbie Phase One Tower to make Bay Street a mature, you know, like retail and F and B area and really part of part of the city. The offices here along Hudson Street, the entrance from Hudson Street, and then the cafe. And then we have a secondary entrance. Well, it's as big and as important as the other, and so actually, this building, because it's so many units, has two entrances. So there's also one of the green strip, and then we have retail spaces along the green strip and Green Street, and then on And then on Green Street will have the parking entrances. We've put in so much, let's say, public space that we also utilize a part of the second floor for it, where we have a health club, including a health club roof deck that sits on top of the cafe building. And then we have a couple of floors of parking and residential levels. And then on the ninth floor deck, the same level as the deck in Phase One, we've created a large outdoor deck for the residents with amenities that are kind of, you know, face, face towards the deck to create an, that's an active outdoor communal life for the residents as well. And it's a small kind of park and a lot of green spaces on the deck as well that can be seen from, from the street. Zooming out a little bit to explain a bit more about the architectural concept of the towers themselves. So obviously, this is the, the architectural concept of Tower One, pretty strong concept with kind of the stacked blocks. On the lower levels, what we are trying to do is create quite a bit of diversity in the use of different materials, different detailing and breaking up the massing to really connect to the local streetscape, to the, the scale of the pedestrian. And then in the upper floors, we have the two towers. And we thought quite a bit about it, what, what is it that we want to do here? And, and I think the idea was that we didn't want to make a real twin tower concept, or then in this case, a triple tower concept, that they would all be the same. We felt like we want to make them family of each other, but they should be a little bit different and have a little bit of their own identity. So we gave them the same height, or almost the same height, but the same amount of floors as the Phase One Tower, sixty-nine floors. But we gave them a slightly different, let's say, architectural manifestation. So where in Phase One, it's more of, you know, like cubic blocks stacked on top of each other. Tower Two is more graphical and has more horizontal lighting and have a more of a graphical appearance. And Tower Three is more kind of composed together of vertical blocks. So the idea is that there's kind of three sibling towers, they are family, but they have kind of their own identity in their own, their own relationship. But all three towers, the idea is to really end it. And we feel that every building should have a, a good ending at the top. And we did that in Phase One and in the Phase Two Towers, the idea is to give them the same light crown and lighting that we have in Phase One as well. So this is a rendered image here on the right and Tower One is already there. And then here you can see Tower Two and Tower Three, where architecturally, you know, they, they differ a little bit. Tower Two is more graphical and horizontal and Tower Three has more vertical stacks. But they are family and they are related and they, they, they do kind of speak as being, you know, like one, one concept. I would like to take a little bit to the floor plans to give it some context on top of Green Street. Page Street to the right, Hudson Street here at the bottom. This is the ground floor plan with the cafe here on the southeast corner. And it's, it's kind of popping out really from the rest of the building. It's important that we really, you know, bring it forward and create its own identity and make this, this open gesture to the people. Then you see the entrance, the lobby space, which has a little bit of a setback. Then the building pops out again, so we think in massing, it's important to create some setbacks and not have this long, you know, like long monotonic facades. We have the offices here along Hudson Street, River Retail, along Bay Street. And we have retail on the other side along the green strip and Green Street. The second floor plan with the, the health club and the outdoor deck on top of the cafe roof. And then going up further in the building, this is the, the base that houses a certain amount of parking spots. But in the towers, we already have residential units to make sure that on every street, there's also some lights and some ice on the street and some lights shining at night. This will be the ninth floor, the deck design, Joe Malillo will speak a little bit more about the landscape architect. But you know, the majority of the ninth floor will be also taken up by residential amenity spaces, communal spaces. And then once you go up in the tower, it is a series of units carefully organized around the core. Are units of different sizes to create a diversity for the potential residents to choose from. And then the roof, including the, the same idea with the crown that we're having in Phase One. Taking you quickly through the, the different materials that we are proposing. So like we said, towers have a lot of familiarity with Tower One. So also here we work with four tones of gray from a lighter silver gray in, for all the, the panels, the metal spandrels and the window frames up to almost entrecite, entrecite black color. And then for the parking garage, one part of the parking garage is clad in a silver corrugated metal facade that's perforated for ventilation. But we are using different profiles, so it's not always the, it will never be monolithic. We use different profiles in the corrugation to make sure that it's always has a little bit of a lively, you know, appearance. If you look at the north and the west elevation, the tower elevations remain the same concept. But the parking garage here is treated differently and we work with vertical tubes. Similar to Phase One, they are bronze anodized aluminum tubes in some ranging color from ivory to bronze to brown. To again create some interest and some diversity in the facade. And this one is, you know, an, an echo or kind of the same from what we're doing in Phase One. Zooming in a little bit on the lower levels, because we feel then, that, that we needed to add another level of detail and interest specifically on the lower level, as we wanted to speak to the, to the sidewalk, to the public, to the, on the pedestrian level. So here you see the cafe. Really felt it could have its own strong identity. The idea is to use red bricks in different patterns, different detailing. We have red colored aluminum window frames. They will have a terracotta colored stone moldings around them. We'll work with a pink, pink colored glazed tiles at the base. There will be some wall sconces, there will be awnings. And so there will be a lot of detailing in this, in this building to really kind of, you know, create interest on the, on the, on the human, humanoid level. Then we have the entrances into the Erby building itself, the main entrance, it's, it's a wooden box. It has vertical stone of G F R C pierce in a beige color. It has maisonery brick infill parts of it. The second floor will be built out of glazed, glazed, glass bricks that will house the, the health club behind it. So imagine that at night, there will be light spilling out through those glazed bricks without, without really seeing what's happening behind it. But you see, there is something going on. And then the base of Tower, Tower Two, will be a two-story high maisonery part of the building. It's a dark gray brick, it's a stretcher bone, so it's a unique piece, it's a little bit longer than your traditional bricks. Again, to create some additional interest and detail to it. And the window frames are set back really deep into this, this brick base to create space for built-in wood, wood clad planters and benches. Again, to create some interaction between the inside and the, and the outside. And then in front of, you know, the tower as well as the entrance, we will have the canopy with a wooden soffit, a wooden ceiling and pendant lighting, which is similar to what we're doing in Phase One. This would be the facade on Bay Street facing the Phase One project with the maisonery brick or the brick base of Tower Two. And then under the parking garage, we change immateriality. We'll have terracotta tiles at the base, we have bronze anodized aluminum window frames to create another level of interest and rits of immateriality. But it all gets tied together with the canopy with the wooden soffit and the pendant lighting, similar to Phase One. This will be the facade along the green strips on the south side facing Plaza Five with the cafe here on the corner. The, the second entrance into our property with the same detailing and the same wood entry vestibule. And then the retail along the green strip and Green Street has a gray ceramic tile base and gray anodized aluminum window frames. But again, we'll have a canopy with a wooden ceiling and the pendant hanging there creating the relationship between, you know, all of the, the different towers and different properties. And then this will be the facade along Green Street that includes also the entrances towards the, towards the parking. Showing some renders and colored images. And this is seen from the southeast corner, so the building here on the left is building five, sorry, Plaza Five. Here at the front, you will see building Tower Two with the more horizontal colorization of the different gray tones. Where in Tower Three, it's more of a vertical stack of blocks that also project in and out and have a little bit more of a three-dimensional manifestation. The crown on the top and here on the top floor, the sixty-ninth floor of Tower Two on the, on the southeast corner, we are, we are creating a skylounge. So everybody that lives in the building has the ability to go up to the top floor, look towards Hudson River, Manhattan, the New York Upper Bay and look into Jersey. And we are considering maybe to take the lower two feet of metal spandrel out and create glass from bottom to ceiling on the sixty-ninth floor. This is a view from the northeast corner, so this will be Tower One with the base and then behind it, you will see Tower Two and Tower Three in the, in the distance. And you can also see that the decks, the deck of Phase One and the deck of Phase Two are at the same level on the ninth floor and kind of speak to each other as well. And in both instances, we'll have green space, extensive green spaces on those floors as well. This is a little bit of a close-up on street, on, on, on street level. Which was a super important to create really an open and inviting building that speaks to the people that are, that are, that are on the streets. And this is Phase One, this is the, the restaurant here on the corner that you probably will know. The maisonery first two floors of Tower Two, the canopy that wraps around with a pendant lighting, the recessed windows, the, the, the building detailed in planters that sit in front of the window and then the entrance to the building and then the cafe in the rear. This is in Bay Street scene, yeah, Bay Street scene from Green Street looking east. So on the left Phase One, on the right Phase Two, again, the canopy to create, you know, a, a, a mature Bay Street with retail on both sides and some similarity and consistency. The open ground floor building planters in the streetscape and, and, and trees to create this and to create an intimate and inviting streetscape. This is then seen from Harbyside Atrium, Plaza Five here on the left, the green strip. Here in the middle, this important crossing, this is the light rail station. So at the front here, our cafe with an entrance right on the corner, so it invites people from both sides kind of in. The Erby entrance right next to it, the parking garage block on top of it. And then you can see the ninth floor deck with the, the pocket part that we have on top of it and the green that kind of pops over over the parapet as well to also indicate, you know, that there's some life up there in the building as well. And then this will be the last image that I would show, a close-up from the cafe. The entrance on, on the corner, the built-in planters in front. And this is the start of the green strip here on, on the left. You see the detailing in the red brick with different patterns and different directions to create interest. The, the moldings around the windows, the awnings, all, all, all made to, to give it a, a like small scale, well-detailed appearance and make it a, a, a rits and, 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 yeah, a rits feeling for, for the pedestrians. There's a small terrace in front of it as well, so people can benefit. The green strip overlook it and, and sit in the sun having a cup of coffee. I think this was more of the architectural concept, I think, and now Chuck. Over to you again.
Good, we're, that, that completes Eric's presentation. And if the board has, has any questions for Eric, I can just kind of give you, the plan here is, is to bring up Mr. Malillo to address the landscaping. And then, and then circle back to, to Mr. Shim. And he'll have more details on, on the architecturals and the design waivers that we're requesting. So, you know, of course, if you have any, any questions for, for Eric Vermillion, you know, feel free.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I have none at this point, anybody else?
I'll save mine to my, to the next witness.
Agreed. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, council.
Okay, so we're going to continue with Joe Malillo, who's our landscape architect. Purpose is going to give you a more of a, you know, roundabout presentation here, so you see the entire project with all the proposed landscaping. So Joe, if you could come, or if he could be sworn in.
Hi Joe, swear in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Joseph Malillo, M is in Michael, E L I L L O.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir, we've qualified you as well in the past, your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you very much, it's, it's a pleasure to be back before the board. And it's really exciting to be here to present this project, the second phase of such an iconic project as the Erby first phase. And really, as, as Eric had, had presented, we're, we're kind of, as the buildings are progressing and, and relate to each other architecturally, we're doing the same on the ground plane and the streetscape. So the great streetscape that's around the base of, of the Phase One building is continuing and in the same vein of materials and, and design aesthetic, moving over to Phase Two. But we have the extra bonus of this, of this wonderful green space and wonderful public amenity to the south of the, of the building, which, which was not part of the first phase, but that really kind of completes this whole streetscape and, and elevates it to another level. So if we just were to take a walk around the building, starting at Bay Street, as Eric mentioned, we are revising or renovating Bay Street, widening it, creating a drop-off area in front of Building Two. We have street trees in, in keeping with the forestry standards with tree pits that are the five foot by ten foot planted tree pit with the three-sided tree guards. We have the concrete sidewalks that are saw cut, saw cut colored concrete that matches Phase One. That is the sidewalk material around a majority of the building. We have the, the strip of decorative paving between the street trees, which is in keeping with Phase One, the same, same palette of material. And that's a porous material. So, so on Bay Street, we have this mid-block crossing that exists today and that really is the, the high point of the street. The Bay Street slopes to the west and to the east, creating these elevated terrace opportunities with the building and the retail spaces. Not, not dissimilar from, from the Phase One building. So we get these elevated walking areas adjacent to the retail and adjacent to the building both to the east and west of that, of that mid-block area. So as we, as we walk to the east, the sidewalk elevation starts to split. We're providing on-grade access to this upper level, that, that dark band that wraps around the corner of the building, around the leasing offices. That provides access to the, to the main lobby entrance off of Hudson Street. Streetscape and street trees continue around the corner onto Hudson Street. We have the, the continuation of the Phase One detailing where we have low seat, low concrete seat walls with, with planting beds to make up the difference in elevation between the finished floor of the building and, and that upper terrace area to the, to the lower sidewalk area, the elevation changes approximately three feet in the, in that area along Hudson Street. So we have this low seat wall with planting beds, we have stairs right in the center, central space of the lobby area leading up to a plaza that's outside the lobby. As we move westward. As we move uh westward. Directly across from the atrium, uh we have the green space, uh next to the cafe, we have this really uh almost. Park-like uh feature that's going to be completely redone, it's a approximately just over a third of. Of an acre that's going to be um renovated, public space uh that's open to to everyone in the neighborhood. Uh real benefit to 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 the project and and the neighborhood. We have some a sloped lawn area with lots of of shade trees being planted with a a walk that accesses up. To the second lobby entrance with Eric, which Eric had mentioned, we have uh to the, yep. Thank you, Eric, for pointing that, uh we have a water feature in that in that area to welcome. Uh people and really centralize and anchor the space, uh that we have uh very nice broad. Uh sitting steps that that lead you down to the lower level. Uh because this area against the building, both the cafe and the other retail areas on the. North side of this green space is at a higher elevation uh than the Plaza Five uh building and retail space. So we we have the the new paving being installed along Plaza Five. Uh at the elevation of this today, and then we're stepping up to the elevation around the base of the building uh for the Erby project. Uh ju- continuing to the west, we have lots of of seating and table and chair opportunity. Uh for users to enjoy more lawn area, and then we have a dog run, a public dog run. Uh with uh dog drinking fountains and shade trees to provide shade in that space. Uh for the dogs to enjoy for uh for from the whole neighborhood, again, this is a whole public uh element uh for use by everybody. Then we transition, i- i- we transition back to the sidewalk on Green Street where we have some street trees. And as Eric had mentioned, um. This is kind of the the utility side of the of the building, um every building has a a back-of-house side. Uh that happens to be on the Green Street side here, we have in uh parking garage access and exit. For vehicles, we've got loading, we have trash pickup, uh all in the in the kind of middle of that. Of that block there, and then to the right and left, the that dark, the darker gray tone that's in the sidewalk. Are utility vaults that are underground and at the sidewalk elevation. You you heard mentioned earlier by by Chuck that we're looking for some, we we need some waivers from the uh forestry standards. It is because of these utilities that we we can't get, unfortunately, we can't get street trees in this area, there's there's not enough room. Because of utilities and vehicular access to the building, uh we provided street trees where we could. Uh which was to the southern end of Green Street. Uh in addition, while while we meet the the standards for the five foot by ten foot planted tree pits. On most trees, uh we do have a few instances where they are a little smaller, that we had to go with a five foot by five foot planted tree pit. Uh because of of proximity to utilities and and other conditions, we just couldn't get the the five foot by ten foot planted tree pit in. Lastly, from a ver- of tree variety and species standpoint. The trees along Bay Street do match uh the the varieties that are listed within the forestry standards. However, along Hudson and Green Street, uh we're proposing a London plane tree. Um I'm sure the board's familiar with those, they they are common uh street tree, uh they they actually exist there today, they're doing quite well. And the thought was that we wanted to continue this. Uh continue that theme uh and and plant new London plane trees both on Hudson Street uh as well as Green Street. So there's a slight deviation there from a species standpoint. If we go to the next slide, Eric. Oh, I'm sorry, Eric, can you go back one second for me? We do have uh street lighting as well, I forgot to mention that. Uh streetlights are located on uh Bay Street, Hudson Street. And a portion of Green Street, again, because of the utilities, we can't locate uh. The streetlights where they normally would occur uh on the along the curb. Uh we are lighting this building from or lighting that space from the building-mounted lights. Uh we did detail that on the on the plans, it was noted. In the in the engineer's report that we do not show. Uh streetlights along Green Street, which is correct, we we don't, but because of that conflict, we're trying to accomplish the lighting. From building-mounted lights.
So as as part of this presentation or project, we would, we are requesting. Uh that streetlights not be required here and that that the onsite building lights are sufficient.
Yes, that's correct. Additionally, in a another letter from from staff. Uh because of the lack of trees on Green Street, it was requested that. We explore and the 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 opportunity of putting planters. Um the same style planter that Eric had mentioned, which is kind of integral to the base of the building. That we explore putting planters in the one bump out bump out area outside of the utility rooms. Um Eric, if you could point to to that area, please. No, uh the other util, yep, along that frontage there, um we're happy to explore that, we do have to. Uh consult with P S A and G and utility companies to see if uh they will allow us to. To to put planters uh not only in front of the utility rooms, but. Uh adjacent to and above the utility vaults, but we are happy to uh explore that. Uh Eric, if you could progress to the next slide, please. So uh from a materiality standpoint, we are continuing uh for the most part, the materials that were already. Exist in Phase One on that, the great streetscape that's around uh the first phase of Erby. So uh just running through here very, very quickly, on the uh top left is a is a paper that's proposed in the uh Greenway Plaza space. Uh the second, the second one over from the left uh is the porous paving that's between the street trees that exists actually today. Uh on the Phase One portion, that we're going to continue that same detail in Phase Two. Uh material three is a concrete paper that's a porous paper that's located on the upper plaza level around the building and around the cafe space. Number four is the concrete sidewalk that exists today outside of Erby One with the saw cut joints. Uh our intent is to continue that pattern uh around the sidewalk of building of Phase Two. Uh numbers five and six are the crosswalks, so we have the indoor blend crosswalk. And the detectable warning paver, um number seven is also a crosswalk, that is the mid-block crossing. Uh that's a paver that exists today uh onsite, but due to the street widening, we're going to redo it. Uh but the intent is to have it look exactly like it does today. Um numbers eight and nine are the concrete stairs and seat walls that exist today in front of. Uh the first phase of Erby that we're continuing, again, that theme uh along Hudson Street. Image ten is a a granite uh paver and tread that's going to be used at the lobby entrances. Number eleven is a decomposed granite surface, which will be utilized in the dog run. And number twelve is a trench drain, uh decorative trench drain that will be used throughout the uh green space area as needed and around the uh fountain. Eric, if you could move to the next slide, please. So from a streetscape furnishing standpoint, we have uh some benches located along the streetscape. Um we have some bike racks, uh there are uh six of these bike racks located around the streetscape, they can each accommodate two bicycles. Uh for a total of twelve uh bicycles uh on the street scape around the building. We have uh trash and recycling cans which match what's existing in Phase One. In the dog run, there'll be a dog drinking fountain, a pet waste station. Uh then we have the planters, those are the planters that are kind of integral to the base of the building. So they'll be on the on that southeast corner and potentially on the on Green Street side as well. Uh we have uh bollards proposed, again, at the mid-block crossing and the crossing over to the light rail station, there would be bollards there for pedestrian safety. We have the streetlight that we're proposing, which matches the streetlights uh elsewhere in this in this development area. And then we have a uh stainless steel metal mesh uh fence and railing, which will be used around the dog run. Uh as well as at the edge of the raised plaza area uh to define those edges. Uh number ten is a a handrail which exists today at Phase One, the stairs will have that same uh handrail in Phase Two. And image number eleven is a a wood topper uh seat wall on a concrete base. Uh which will be utilized in a portion of the uh Greenway area to create additional sitting space for for public to use and enjoy. If you could progress to the next slide, Eric, thank you. Um these are some characterises of how uh the that water feature, which is really kind of like a um. A water table, if you will, uh these are. This is how it's envisioned that the that water feature outside the lobby entrance will will look in function where the water just. Stays really flat and level and just kind of rolls out down the edges of the. Uh of the sides of the fountain and is collected in the trench drains, which uh I showed you previously. Uh the granite paving that we mentioned before would come right up to the edge of the of this water feature as well. It is worth mentioning, uh we do meet the green area ratio requirement uh for this project. Uh Eric, if you could move to the next slide as well, please. Thank you. So as as uh as you heard from Eric previously, the uh there are some rooftop uh components to this project. On the lower left corner above the cafe is the second floor roof deck just outside of the health club, and that would be part of the health club. On the uh ninth floor, there are, there's the many space with with lots of uh. Great activities for the residents of the building to use and enjoy and and support the interior amenity space. Uh we have a swimming pool that is oval shaped in the in the corner. Uh it's elevated approximately five feet above the 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 main building floor level. Uh and we access that by the stepped terraces that are that create these nice lounge areas and opportunities for seating. We provide uh we we have ramp access to get up to every level as well as stair access. Um we have shade trees around this area also to provide some shading opportunity. Um and and kind of that connection to to nature and these trees, as Eric mentioned, can be seen from the street as well. This area is defined by a fence enclosure and the pool enclosure is up at the upper level. Uh which is, which is nice because it leaves the other two levels, the lower two levels available for. Uh residents to use and enjoy when in times when the pools close, so maybe in the shoulder seasons of the of the year. And in the other corner of the rooftop, we have a two-leveled or or two-stepped. Um area where the lower level has barbecue grills and tables and chairs for the residents to. Use, uh then we step up to a park-like uh setting with lawn and shade trees. Uh planting and and benches for the residents to enjoy, so it's kind of like in the you know this condition where you're grilling and eating next to the park. And again, as we approach the corner of the building, uh there are these trees which are raised up and visible from the street. Uh again, that connection to to nature, uh which is really important, in the cen- center of this rooftop. Um is an additional seating space, which is adjacent to an outdoor covered seating area off of the amenity space. It is worth noting, and you'll hear this from uh the architect uh next. One of the waivers we're requesting is for parapet height. Uh and that is due to these the stepped up area with the where where the pool is is up above. Uh the roof deck, so the parapet has to come up high as well. It is worth noting that. We've been collaborating with a landscape designer, uh Boss Smets, on this project, uh similar to. Um Eric's involvement, we are uh the the landscape architects of record. Uh for this project, uh we're happy to work with Boss, we've worked with him in the past. And he was recently. He he recently was awarded the renovation project at Notre Dame, which is a is a really amazing thing. Uh so we're great, we're happy to collaborate with him and Eric and the rest of this great team on a on a project that um. Is is so iconic for the for the Erby brand and the the Phase One that exists today, and we're happy to extend it over and. Uh keep that theme going. With that, uh that concludes my testimony, I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
Excellent, thank you, sir, um I do have one question, but I think I can direct it to Liz. Um it's concerning the chain link fence around that dog run, is that allowed, Liz?
Um I'll have to check the redevelopment plan if it says. Otherwise.
It is, if I may, it's not, it's not a chain link fence, it we, I know it had the appearance of that, but. Um it's actually a a stainless steel cable mesh. Uh that is, i- it's it's an upgraded fence material, it's it's not stainless steel, I'm sorry, it's not chain link.
Okay, um can you give us a a detailed picture on it?
Um Eric, could you go back? We we can, if this um, could you zoom in on on that to enlarge it, please? So if you can, you as you can see here, it's it's almost like a a this mesh netting that forms the infill.
Still still looks chain link to me.
It does exist in Phase One. But we can provide more more uh more detail and photo photos for you.
Um. Yeah, if you could, I mean, it to me, it looks like chain link, I know it's it's not the same material. Apparently, but um and if we could check.
Are they are they tack welded on every four corners, that's how it it stays together?
No, it's it's not, it's not welded, it's um, there's a a a metal track that that this uh steel mesh gets. Uh attached to the where where the the where the wire touches. There's a crimp around every connection that that helps form that that square look. We're happy to uh work with planning and and staff to. To to demonstrate what this looks like and. To to their satisfaction.
Okay, I I'm comfortable moving forward, but uh maybe if we can, Liz, can you get a clarification? During the presentation on uh the redevelopment plan for us?
Yep, will do.
Okay, thank you, I feel like uh we're gonna have the time, so. Um all right, that's it for me, uh anybody else from Mr. Malillo?
I do, Mr. Malillo, I think I think you may have answered this on the uh green. Between Hudson and Green Street, the green strip. You said, there there's some really cool uh. Um trees there now, like I think the last time I was there is a beautiful Japanese maple, it's actually, you know, kind of grown into that area. So what are you gonna do with all those trees, are you gonna replant those, move them, or completely take them out of there?
So un- unfortunately, with the construction going on, those trees are are all to be removed.
Okay.
And and new trees are being put in. And mo- most of those trees that are there are uh carrot trees, which. Um as they mature or they start to fall apart over time, the branches start to break, the limbs start falling. So they. It it uh they used to be a very popular street tree until people realized when they mature, they they fall apart. And uh the industry is starting to shy away from from using those.
Okay, and then you said something else, or you're getting some special uh. Permission, I guess, for planters in front of a utility room, where was that exactly again, I I missed that.
Of of course, so Eric is highlighting that for me here, it's just, it it's in that part of the building that is recessed. Um the. Li- Liz had asked if we could. But to add a little more green to the to the Green Street frontage, uh if we could add some planters along the facade of the building. Uh and that was really the only location we could where they weren't directly on top of the vaults, but they're very, very close to them, so we have to. Coordinate with the utility company to see if we can accommodate that request.
I I hope that does happen, I I'm totally with Liz on that, that would be, there's no other greenery there, so yeah, I think that would, that would be really good.
Yep, we're we're happy to ask.
Thank you. That's it for me, Chairman.
All right, thanks, Doc, anybody else? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so um the next witness I want to bring up is Ed Shim, and Ed's gonna. Kind of bring you back more on the the facts and figures and details uh of the project. In deeper detail, so uh and he's been sworn and qualified uh for the record.
Correct.
So.
And uh, talking about the record, we do have uh, Commissioner Cruz tuned in. Uh, he is, I don't know if he's still on there. Yeah, he's still in there. Uh, he tuned in a little late. He won't be able to vote on this project, but he is in the line.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, great. Um, so I I will um, try to present as as best as I can, the um, the calculations and and the unit counts and mixes and and what have you, uh, as succinctly as I can. Uh, so this project is, again, as as noted earlier, uh, in our testimony, it is the uh, second phase of the first phase RV project that was built as part of an overall master plan. That master plan is uh, is is supported by three different lots. Uh, thirty-one point oh one, thirty-one point oh two, and thirty-one point oh three. Uh, the latter thirty-one point oh three being phase one. All three lots uh, constitute a hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-one square feet. That is the lot area that we're using for the purposes of the zoning calculations to make sure that we are in compliance with what we are allowed to build on this site. Uh, the gross square footage of this particular phase, which is the two towers on a base is one million six hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-one square feet. Of that square footage, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and six is mechanical spaces and parking, which can be excluded from the overall zoning square footage calculation. And therefore, if we subtract that from the overall gross, the total zoning square feet for this uh, project in this phase is one, one million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-five zoning square feet. Uh, it's important to note that as we also have to take into consideration the zoning square feet of phase one, which was only six hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and eighty-four square feet. You add both of those up and you have a total zoning square footage of two million one hundred and forty-nine nine sixty-nine, which translates into a zoning floor area ratio factor of fourteen point eight nine. And the reason why that's important is because what's permitted on this site is a zoning floor area ratio of fifteen. So our zoning square footage uh, that we are developing on this site in conjunction with what is built in phase one is compliant as far as meeting the fifteen point oh FAR requirement. As far as the unit counts for this particular phase, uh, we have in Tower Two, which is the one in the middle that you see there on the screen, the northeast tower, we have sixty studios, four hundred and forty-two one bedrooms, two hundred and fifty-seven two bedrooms for a total of seven hundred and fifty-nine units. In Tower Three, which is the tower on the very left of that image, which is the southwest corner, it it houses thirty-six studios, six hundred and eighty-five one bedrooms, and a hundred and twenty-six two bedrooms for a total of eight hundred and forty-seven units. In totality, both tower uh, houses one thousand six hundred and six units. And of the sixteen oh six units, uh, we spoke earlier about uh, a hotel component. So we were, uh, we are going to be planning up to a hundred and sixty-four hotel keys, otherwise known as rooms, will be built uh, in the same manner as the residential units. They will not be distinguished, but they will have the same type of layout and vocabulary as the residential units. The only difference being that it will be a uh, hotel use. They will all be on one floor and they will be dispersed between the two towers as we uh, finalize the programming the coming months. We do envision a mix of the studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms as it relates to the hotel keys. Uh, moving over to the parking count, uh, the this redevelopment plan uh, states a maximum parking requirement of one space per unit. It does not mention anything related to a minimum. But uh, as far as that's uh, is concerned, we are providing two hundred and seventy-two parking spaces within the garage structure of this building, uh, with a valet uh, condition, uh, with a max cap of five hundred spaces. Uh, the vehicle count, it's important to note, uh, is subject to change based on uh, pavement, striping design, and final structural coordination. Uh, so we do ask for that condition, uh, noted as far as the uh, parking count is concerned, but we are targeting two hundred and seventy-two spaces with a valet cap of five hundred spaces. Uh, in, within that parking count that we're providing, uh, we are meeting the uh, state's requirement of uh, EV charging stations within the building. And so therefore, forty-two uh, of those spaces will be EV charging stations, uh, meeting the requirement of fifteen percent by the state. Moving over to the bike storage requirement, uh, we do have a a one-to-one uh, bike storage requirement for the residential use. And then for the uh, retail component, we do have a requirement of four spaces per fifteen thousand square feet developed. And so if you put all the numbers together as it relates to what is constitutes residential area versus retail area, we are required to have eight hundred and eleven spaces in the building. And so we are providing eight hundred and eleven bike storage spaces within the building, some of which is actually on the plaza itself outside. Uh, there are uh, several bike racks located along Green Street and Hudson Street as well, which matches sort of and and very consistent with what we did in phase one. So moving on over to the deviations that we are requesting, uh, the one deviation that we are requesting in this project is the um, uh, the maximum uh, stories. Uh, we do have a uh, a provision here that we are required to uh, go no more than fifty stories or eight hundred feet. Um, we are proposing two sixty-nine story towers. And so the deviation is to uh, request the um, uh, the number of stories to exceed the fifty stories. However, uh, it's important to note that we are uh, going to be well under the maximum height restriction of eight hundred feet. Uh, the towers here that we're proposing at sixty-nine stories is six hundred and seventy-seven feet, ten inches high. And so that's the um, height of the two towers that we're proposing. Uh, just for reference, the tower height for phase one was six hundred and sixty-six, six hundred and sixty-seven feet in eight inches. So we're about ten feet higher than phase one. And the reason being is that uh, some of the lessons learned from the first tower, we do need a little bit more height on the ground floor where most of the double height utility spaces are required, the loading spaces, et cetera, where a lot of mechanical transfers are happening. And then on the ninth floor as well, we where we do have house amenities inside the building. In addition, on the sixty-nine floor, which is the very top floor of the tower, we do need a little bit of height. So we added two additional feet on that story to accommodate for some mechanical transfers and structural elements as well. So in tota- in totality, we are about ten feet higher uh, than phase one, but still well over a hundred feet under the eight hundred feet maximum height restriction. So that is the deviation that we are requesting, uh, specifically relates to the number of stories at sixty-nine versus the fifty-story max. Uh, then we're moving over to a a number of design waivers that we're requesting. Uh, there was um, an indication of uh, in in Joe Malillo's presentation, uh, some uh, some uh, waiver requesting for the height of the uh, parapet. Uh, there is a maximum height of eighty-five feet permitted to the top of the base uh, measured from the elevation thirteen, which is one foot above the floodplain. Uh, we do, for the most part, majority of the amenity deck on the ninth floor does comply. Uh, that elevation is eighty-three feet, ten inches. However, as you've seen in Eric and Joe's presentation, the the amenity deck starts to step up where we have the pool. And so in order to house the pool and the tub of water that we have up there, it is important for us to elevate that deck uh, by a couple more feet. And so um, that uh, pool deck is proposed to be eighty-eight foot, ten inches, just about five feet above the eighty-three, ten. And then the parapet has to be a certain amount of feet higher than the last highest roof deck. And so the top of the parapet on this deck is ninety-three foot, ten inches, which exceeds the eighty-five foot maximum height. And so that's the de- uh, design waiver that we are requesting to be above that eighty-foot, five-foot height, only for the areas where we have the higher carpet in relation to the pool deck. The second waiver we're requesting, there is a uh, a statement in the redevelopment plan about the base facade needing to be of masonry material. I think here, we're not necessarily not complying with that requirement. As you've seen in the, in the elevations, there is a significant amount of masonry that we're proposing at the base of the facade. The only difference here is that we are adding a good amount of metal and glass as well as it relates to the sort of the programmatic changes within the ground floor. And so we are simply uh, disclosing the fact that we are not entirely a hundred percent masonry, but it is a mix of masonry, glass, and metal. The next waiver that we're requesting, there is a statement in the redevelopment plan about a uh, a minimum requirement and a maximum requirement of forty, forty percent to seventy-five percent glass required for the ground floor base facade for the first two stories. Uh, our proposal is twenty-seven percent glass. And the reason being, uh, the the scale of this building and the amount of utility spaces that we do require as well as some of the egress components coming out to grade and all of the other programs that don't necessarily mandate a visible material in in uh, in regards to glass. Uh, when all said and done, as you saw in the, in the presentation, the ground floor facade constitutes only twenty-seven percent glass. And so we are falling short of that requirement. So it is a design waiver that we are requesting. However, it's important to note that we have been sensitive to proposing glass at at its max capacity where we can, where it makes sense as far as it relates to the cafe, the retail, the entries to the building, uh, the leasing office, et cetera. So where the program requires it, we are proposing as much glass as we can. There's just a significant amount of utility spaces for the size of this building. The next waiver uh, has it has to do as it relates to the ten-foot step back required on all sides at the top of the base. Uh, here, uh, what what we're uh, signifying is that we are meeting an exception to that redevelopment plan in that um, what we're pursuing is that there is a uh, provision here in the redevelopment plan that if we're uh, meeting a forty-foot uh, step back on two of the sides, that we will be compliant. And so um, as you can see, based on the two towers and where it's juxtaposed and situated on the top of the space, the towers are more than forty feet step back from two sides of the base, depending on which tower you look at. So for the northeast tower, which is Tower Two, the one in the middle of the screen, we are more than forty feet uh, away from the west facade of the base as well as the south facade of the base. And for Tower Three, which is the one on the left, we are more than forty feet uh, from the north facade of the base as well as the east facade of the base. And so for those two um, uh, elements, we are complying with that. But it is a waiver in case uh, in in this, in the essence, that we are not ten-foot step back on all sides. Uh, it's also important to note that in this jurisdiction for the Harborside West District in particular, as it relates to the exchange place, uh, that we, we are allowed for the building to be located up to any two property lines. However, uh, we do still set back the building, as you've seen in the presentation of the ground floor. There are a lot of ins and outs of this building, so the footprint allows for various setbacks along the property line. There's only one, uh, the north facade and a portion of the tower which falls short of the ten-foot setback. That is at nine foot seven, uh, if I were to be exact, nine foot, seven and three-quarter inch on the north facade. Everywhere else, we are meeting the ten-foot setback requirement. Uh, and again, in some places, we are well exceeding the ten-foot setback because of the various ins and outs that allows for um, uh, activation along the street and the facade. Then I move over to the signage uh, waiver that we're requesting. Uh, in in this district, we are allowed one residential sign. We are proposing four residential signs, two of which are the Irby brand signage that is gonna be housed above the entries for the two, uh, the two entryways. The other two signs being as it relates to the loading and then the part, um, the uh, trash and recycling. So those four that support the residential use is what is a, um, is in allowing us to pursue the the waiver as it relates to the number of residential signs we require for this building. The next one is the retail sign. We are allowed one retail sign per use fronting on a public street. We are proposing nine retail signs, one proposed for each of the resid- uh, different retail components in this building, and we do have a lot of them. We have four retail spaces, a cafe, a health club, and a leasing office. And so for each of those, we require a sign. We are asking for nine retail signs to be proposed. Um, there was a a little bit of a misrepresentation in our, in our submission uh, that said that we had eight fronting on a public street. Uh, that is not necessarily true. Um, Bay Street and Hudson Streets are constituted as as private streets. And then we have the south facade that faces a private green space, plaza space. So uh, technically speaking, the only public street is really Green Street. And so those, um, there's a, there's only four signs that front uh, Green Street. And so just wanted to clarify that. Uh, I believe that concludes my testimony as it relates to the facts and figures of this project. Open to any questions?
Yes, thank you, Ed. Any, any questions from the board for Mr. Shim?
Thank you, Mr. Shim. Um, I you may have one. I don't know if it's appropriate here. Um, I want to talk about actually two things. Um, the hotel units, how would they manage?
They will be managed by the uh, the developer, um, and whoever will be deemed as the operator of the hotel.
Okay, so it's an actual hotel operator? It's not Airbnb?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, um, the parking spaces, uh, so you're targeting two seventy-two. But with valet spaces, uh, you could max out at five hundred.
Correct.
That's a big fluctuation. Where are we gonna find that many extra spaces in there?
Well, I I think based on the layout here, and I don't know if Eric wants to go back to one of the slides that shows the parking garage. Uh, there's a significant amount of drive aisle space because of the way this garage structure is is designed. And so we are um, anticipating that there would be room for up to five hundred spaces for the uh, for the valet condition. Uh, again, if you would allow us to just show you uh, the garage layout here. Um, so the 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 striped spaces, as you see, again, this is only one of the levels. Um, we do have a a bit of a circulating drive aisle that goes around the the northwest component of the garage as well as the uh, southeast corner there. Um, so we could technically fit a double row of parking spaces in each of those drive aisles. There, the drive aisle also includes in um, sort of a a speed ramp there as well, which could possibly house some cars. So uh, just, just to be um, a a little bit conservative, we're, we're looking at um, uh, an additional two hundred and twenty-eight spaces.
Okay, so those spaces would be in the drive aisles themselves?
Correct.
Yes. Um, Santo, does that trigger a, a drive aisle with deviation? Would they have to come back to the board if, if that was the plan?
If it if it turns out that the drive aisle is going to then change in its configuration, that would be something that engineer would look at. And if engineering has an issue with it, uh, because it's now triggering a deviation from the standard is insufficient and with uh, they may direct them back here for for an amendment to the, to the plan.
Okay, Chairman, I do want to add that uh, we're asking, asking for a a max cap of five hundred. So I don't, I don't know that we're necessarily saying that we can fill this garage up, you know, at at five hundred capacity, but we do ask for a max cap of five hundred.
Um, yes, it's not the cap that I have a problem with. It would be, uh, you know, if we're triggering a, a drive aisle deviation.
Understood.
You might, my, my thought on that, if if I can, uh, is that
My, my thought on that, if, if I can, uh is that the valet, if, if you're okay with the valet operation. That, that would cover that. You wouldn't necessarily need a deviation because you still have the drive aisle with there, but you're allowing. The valet operation to act within the drive aisle. And then it's, it's a matter of programming. Can you, you know, obviously you're gonna need some space, but the only people using that would be the valet operators bringing. Bringing the, the cars in and out.
I would hope so.
Yes, yes, abso- absolutely.
Um. I, I mean, it's not that I have a problem with it. It's, it's just the technicality of it, whether it triggers a deviation or not. And uh I think we should go on record with that question for engineering. Um that if, you know, engineering finds that it's, you know, it triggers a deviation, the applicant would have to come back.
Or, I mean, we could, i- if, if the board deems it appropriate to valley operation. Then I would offer or, or request that a deviation be approved. As part of this project if necessary, so that we don't have to come back to the board.
Um Santo, could we do that? Is that possible?
So. What is the potential deviation? We have a drive aisle that complies.
But if that drive aisle isn't used as a drive aisle. If there's cars being parked in there, wouldn't that create a drive aisle deviation?
Oh, but it's loading? It's queuing?
Yeah, you're, you're parking cars within the drive aisle, but I think a, a valet operation. Pretty much implies that you're going to be parking in the drive aisle.
I'm not clear on, on that aspect of it. When you say parking, are they standing in the drive aisle? Or we're parking them in the drive aisle? What was the testimony? Did I miss it?
No, the test, yeah, I think you did. The testimony is there'll be parking cars in those drive aisles as part of the valet use.
And that's what I'm not clear on. So I'm looking at this eighth floor plan. I'm looking at drive aisles that comply with the width. Right where the arrows are and the turnaround where the arrows are. Where's the parking in the drive aisle?
So that's. Go ahead.
That's what we're asking for. You would be parking, uh you know, within the drive aisle, most likely at the end of the rows. Or, or similar, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm envisioning, you know, the parking garages in New York City where they, they take them down and they're. They, they park them where they can and then they gotta move cars around to get them out. But you're still gonna have a, a drive aisle to get out of the garage.
So it's not a dedicated par- uh parking spot, so uh council, that's what. My understanding is, right? So you could, you could park on the side of the like little driveway. But only the people parking and getting those cars out are the, the valet parkers.
That, that's correct.
And we've done that before. I think we've, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, uh Chairman, but I think. I'm, I'm glad that you brought it up because I think it is, you know, for the record, we should put it on there in case there's a problem, but. I think it has happened where we've approved this before. I might, I might be maybe wrong.
Yeah.
But are we counting them as parking spaces?
Yes.
So may I add that we're talking about two different scenarios. One is a self-park garage, which we're asking for two hundred and seventy-two spaces. The other option being a valet, we would never. We would never propose a situation where it would be a combination of both. So I think what I, I, I think the point I'm trying to make here is that the redevelopment plan does speak to drive aisle with requirements. In a self-parking situation, however, it also, it also allows a valet parking scenario. If it can be demonstrated, then an efficient, safe means of operation will be provided. So I think in the situation where it does become a valet, that we wouldn't. The drive out width wouldn't necessarily be of concern because the public is not accessing the public garage, the parking garage. It would be a valet operator that would safely distribute the cars in and out of the garage. So I think, you know, I, I'm just pointing out that there's two provisions here in the redevelopment plan that might. Conflict with one another, but if you look at it as two separate operations, it does not.
I, I agree. They're definitely two separate operations. You, you know, the testimony is, we won't have self-parking on those.
Also Chairman, I would, I would for this. You cannot park in a drive. And if you are parking in a drive aisle, you can't count that as a parking space. So that may go towards the proof necessary to a deficiency if one existed. If we're having a valet system and they're loading and jockeying cars around. But it's a manned system. I would argue that those cars are not parked. They're standing and being moved and jockeyed into various spaces. But they do not count as parking spaces because that's the drive aisle. It's either a drive aisle or it's a parking space regardless of what it's. What's actually happening in it. Its purpose is to access parking spaces. So. If I'm understanding what's being articulated, we've all been in the parking garages in, in the uh. The city where they just shove them in there and the guys and girls are jockeying them around. Am I missing something? Are we underparked, council?
We're not underparked. We're actually, there's, there's a.
That's what I thought.
There's no, there's no minimum, so uh you're um. It's, it's just a matter of, you know, if the demand, if there's a demand for, for more parking, we're consistent with the, the redevelopment plan. We're asking for the option to do a valet service.
Oh. So Chairman, I would, I would just say that. The resolution is gonna call out a maximum number of parking spaces as presented in the plan. But those parking spaces have to be shown and counted. So on this particular sheet. You're showing parking spaces. They're all accounted for. Whatever that max is, it's what's shown on the plan, right? If it calculates out to two hundred, it's two hundred. If it's. Four hundred, it's four hundred. If. Demand is such that it's more practical for the building to operate with a valet system. Then the operator will bring in a valet system. I don't know that that's a deviation. I don't know that that's a site plan issue. I don't know that that becomes a violation of the site plan.
Here's, here's a thought. If uh maybe as, in any event, the, the board is okay with the valet option that it, the condition of approval be that. That the applicant provide a parking management plan to the planning department to be reviewed by the planning division and the city engineering. Uh to, to see, you know, for their review and approval. Uh and then at that time, any event, it's determined that we, uh there is some kind of deviation required, then we'd have to come back to the board.
I would have no problem with that. I, I think that's actually the way to go. Um I, I just don't wanna create a deviation. Without addressing it on record.
Yeah, understood.
Commissioner Torres, I think you had a question also. Eddie, you out there?
Yeah, um, that's last thing. I, um, this was one of my questions before we put it up. I feel like, I think you guys answered my question, but he kept saying one or the other. And as voting on this project to the other night. Um, am I just keeping it as simple as saying we're gonna have two hundred and seventy-two parking spots? This is what we're voting on. Anything else that happens later on has to happen later on because I'm. It, it, we're leaving it open in a presentation as. There's parking spots at two seventy-five, but maybe we'll have valet parking at five hundred. I'm not sure which one we're going with. In this phase. And um if that's the clarification that you just came up with now. Uh once the uh parking authority or whoever decides that it has to come back. I don't wanna see a deviation either, but as the purpose of voting for this tonight or looking at it tonight as saying. Um you have less than fifty percent parking. Compared to with, there is no, like I said, there's no minimum, you know, and there's just one called maximum uh for unit. Um so I would, I just like to have a classification on. As simple as saying, what are we looking at right now? The two seventy-five and that's it? And then they could. With the planners there for with the ca- city council decide what other step to take where the valet pocket is gonna be in it or not.
So Chairman, it sounds to me like. We call out that there's two hundred seventy-five parking spaces. We also note that there is no minimum. The applicant's potential issue is two seventy-five is not enough parking. Because three fifty want parking. And the way the applicant is going to want to tackle that problem in the future when the project is actually leasing out is. But we only have two hundred seventy-five parking spaces.
It's just, just to clear up direct two seventy-two.
Uh two seventy-two. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna come with a proposed plan with valet parking. To try to jockey these things around to satisfy our end users that want more parking. Than we can actually provide. I think that's. That becomes a operational issue at that time. I don't think it's a site plan issue. We're going to approve. A building with a set number of parking spaces as permitted under the plan. That's the limit of our power.
Agree.
If they have to, you know. Shuttle these cars somewhere else and bring them back for people with a valet service and everything else. That's an operational issue that they'll have to address, but. They can be. The drive aisle, there, there can be no parking in the drive aisle. That can't happen. That's a life safety issue. Uh so if cars are being. Maneuvered in the drive aisle. If there's a, a standing in the drive aisle while being maneuvered. That's an onsite operational issue that's outside our purview, but. You can't be parking cars in a drive aisle and leaving them there. Obviously, we all agree on that. How that operation happens. It's gonna be, if it becomes an issue, it's gonna be an enforcement issue down the line. It's not a deviation because you can't, I shouldn't say you can't. But I don't know how you grant a deviation that allows parking in the drive aisle.
I agree. That's my concern is that we're, you know, we're opening that can of worms by saying. That we can have five hundred spaces max if there's a valet service.
You can't, well, so we can't grant more than what's shown. That's the number, right? If, if you're at two seventy-two, then two seventy-two, you can't grant. Five hundred if there aren't five hundred spaces.
Agreed.
When I say grant, you're not really granting. You're, you're approving, but we gotta call out that number, Mr. Harrington. And it's gotta be what, what's provided.
Uh, one, one more question there with that. Does this number two seventy-two? Is for the units that uh being occupied without the hotel? Or is that the hotel being considered with those two?
I believe it would be a mix, uh depending, depending on the program, the ultimate programming uh by the, by the own- ownership.
Okay.
And the, just to be clear, the two seventy-two isn't a deviation?
Correct.
Yeah, the, the two seventy-two is a, a number that's within the plan. That's fine. Um I, I'm fine going forward calling it two seventy-two.
Sure.
I, if we wanna, you know, put that as a condition that. If they wanted more in a valet scenario, they would have to submit to the planning division, also the engineering division. Uh being traffic and engineering. Uh and, you know, if they.
I agree.
Creates a deviation, they would have to come back to the board.
Agreed.
And that, that would be acceptable.
Uh Chair, if I may follow up on Commissioner Torres' question in regards to parking. The retail users, would they be part of that parking spaces as well? Would they be using that?
I, I think that's, I think that's probably still to be determined, but it, it could be used for all the uses. I. Um said, uh for, you know, residential, retail or the hotel.
Okay.
Okay, um yeah, I'm satisfied if, if that's a condition of approval. Uh anybody else? Any questions?
Yes, I have uh two more quick questions.
Sure.
Just trying to clarify for me. Um it was mentioned that the Green Street is the only right of way. Is. I look at Hudson Street as a right of way. Is that not a right of way or no?
Why, why? It's the only, Commissioner, it's the only public right of way. Yeah, cuz Bay Street is, is a privately owned and so is Hudson Street. And then the Plaza Five between the two buildings is private property as well.
So I'm getting confused with Hudson Street being, there's so many different people walk up and down it, the light bell is on it. And there's so much movement there. That's still a private right of way?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. I just, I should on that for you. Thank you. Uh the next thing I wanted to ask was the um step up of the swimming pool. Um now the swimming pool is for both ta- will be used with the both new towers and face chill, right? They will both have access.
That's correct.
Swimming pool area? Okay, now we step up about five feet, I think you said?
That's right.
Okay, my thing is just a real safety issue. The fence that goes around the pool on the outside of the property. Is that getting, you know, you, you have a barrier on the corner, right?
That's right.
Right, so how high is that barrier?
So the, the barrier that you're referring to, which I call the parapet. Which is, which is on the perimeter of that facade. It is five feet above the highest pool deck plateau, right?
Highest pool, okay.
Yeah, which is, which, which far exceeds the code requirement of forty-two inches.
For safety, for safety purposes, geez.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you very much. That's why I wanted to go. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Nope. Okay, um.
Okay.
Hey, uh it's seven fifty. Uh I'd like to give our quarter reporter a break there. Like, it's been working hard all night. Um, do we wanna take ten right now?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, if we could uh just stop right now, we'll uh come back at eight o'clock. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Thanks.
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Oh, yes, Eric Ballou, E R I C, last name Ballou, B A L L O U.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballou, good evening. We've qualified you, I don't know how many times now, if we're on track. Your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay, thanks for calling.
Thank you. So this is the exciting part, the engineering part, right? So. So I will go through the engineering details, so we're all aware. So the site is within a flood zone at elevation 12. The streets around are about nine and a half to about 12 and a half. So we've elevated the finished floor as we did in the first phase to be a foot above it to elevation 13. And it also will also obtain a flood hazard permit and address all the flood hazard aspects of the project. Regards to stormwater management, most of the parking lot, the area now is all parking lots. So we do have a very small increase of impervious area. So to mitigate that small increase of impervious area, we have green roofs, as we saw through Joe Willows' testimony, as well as pervious pavers. So when we do the inclusion of those stormwater techniques, our discharge will be equal or less than what's there today. In regards to utilities, you know, we'll have water sanitary coordinating with the J C M way, as we always do. Eric, if you could advance the next slide. So this is a sort of a colored version of the subdivision map that was submitted. Very minor changes. So we're basically widening private Bay Street to have some drop off areas. So to accommodate that, we're making the roadway lot, which is lot thirty one oh two, about six foot wider. And then we're taking away a little space, which is the blue lot to the south where the phase two building is, that's getting a little bit smaller. One of the the release are being requested for this this lot line adjustment is lot area. The ordinance requires one acre where our proposed lot is at point three oh five. But we're closer to conformance because the original lot before we adjusted it was point two seven. So we're asking for relief. I was done before, but we're closer to conformance with this new lot line configuration. In regards to engineering aspects, that that's what I have. Mr. Harrington, anything else engineering wise that's?
No, that I think we're good unless the board has any questions.
There's no stormwater detention?
We were able to offset the increase with green roof as well as the permeable pavers, which have a stone bed underneath them. So they do provide some level of detention to to make up the difference.
Okay, understood. Anybody, any questions, Mr. Ballou?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to continue on with Mr. Colling to bring us home on the application.
Hi, Ed, how you doing?
Hello.
I will swear you in. Do you have any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, the first name is Edward, E D W A R D, last name is Colling, K O L L I N G.
Thank you.
Mr. Colling, good evening. Again, we've qualified you a million times in the past. Are your licenses current again tonight?
Yes, my license is is current, as well as my status as American Institute of Certified Planners, all all current.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Okay, Mr. Colling, could you please address the requested deviations in design waivers for the board?
Certainly. I'll, since Eric just mentioned the subdivision, I'm going to address that first while it's fresh in mind. And really, I think that this is more of a technicality. As Eric mentioned, it's a it's a smaller lot, but the intention was for this lot to be part of this circulation system, which is required in the plan. It's really a goal, intent and purpose of the of the plan. The the it's results in a widened widened street, which is an overall improvement for traffic circulation. It provides for the separation of vehicular and pedestrian traffic. It is consistent with the intent of the redevelopment plan to improve the functional and physical layout of the redevelopment area. The resulting development parcel is still over one and a half acres, so that still complies. So there's no negative impact there. So here, clearly, this is an instance where there's no negative impacts either to the intent of the redevelopment plan or the public or the public good. In fact, it's an improvement and a benefit to the public good. So you can look at this as the benefits substantially outweighing any detriment. The variance is related to the site plan and to the the building, the architecture, so to speak. The first one I'll address is the number of stories. And as it has been mentioned more than a few times, is that the maximum height is actually eight hundred feet, and we're well within that height. It's six hundred and sixty seven feet, ten inches. So we're well below the maximum of eight hundred. We are asking for sixty nine stories versus the permitted fifty stories. This is the same variance that was granted for phase one. And it should be noted that even with the additional floors, we're well with we're within the permitted floor area. And this is accommodated because the residential floors are typically in terms of their size, typically smaller than, say, a commercial floor area. And way back, way back machine, this area was being looked at more as a commercial office park type of environment. That has changed over over time because of the market demands and just the way people work and how they and how we do our business more remotely and things of that nature. And this really, in my mind, is a is a benefit in changing the type of building because as the residential buildings, as I mentioned, are more slender. They allow for more air, more light, more view for more view corridors. So really, if you look at this, you have a benefit. It's really a benefit in terms of the architectural design, in terms of providing more public benefit rather than lesser. And at the same time, we're not exceeding the maximum permitted height, and we're not exceeding the floor area. So there are no negative impacts. So here, I think, again, it benefits substantially outweigh the detriment. And I think you can see just from the design and how it's been presented that these are iconic buildings and will provide a nice visual effect in the in the the streetscape and 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 in the building plane. Another height related variance is for the height of the base. These are actually rather minor, in my mind at least. The permitted height is eighty five feet, and in general, the base does meet that requirement at eighty three feet, ten inches. As you heard in the testimony, the there is a portion of the deck that has that rises an additional five feet, so it does need a variance of three feet, ten inches. It rises to eighty eight feet, ten inches. And then the parapet, of course, has to be increased as well for for the for the for the two purposes, and one of them is really more from safety because of the the pool use that's that's there, but it's and it's also building code. So again, I think that these are rather minor deviations that will not be discernible from the street. So there's no impact on the public good. There's really not any substantial impact on the intent and purpose of the redevelopment plan. You know, generally, that the base does conform to the to the height with those two sort of minor locations where the height had to be increased. So when you look at the overall impact of this project, the beneficial impacts of this project and how it fits into the master plan for this area. Again, you have a case where the benefits substantially outweigh any detriments regarding this project. Continuing on with the base. And as the architects both presented, the both the design architect and the architect of record, the the base was intended to be primarily masonry, including brick, stone, textured concrete, those sort of materials mentioned in the redevelopment plan. And masonry has been incorporated into the into the base. I think you saw how creatively it's been incorporated into, say, the cafe area and also some other of the lower portions of the of the base. But also, there is metal, there's glass, and the reason for this is that they're all high quality materials. And and the idea is that these buildings are really more of a high quality contemporary design. And using solely masonry really would be out of character with what these what these buildings are are meant to present in terms of their visual and their aesthetics. The there is also the issue of the of the glass, as was mentioned, it should be forty percent to seventy five percent. Now, what what the what the architect has done is it does have significant glass areas where the glass can be utilized, the storefronts, the entrances. Those glass areas certainly are within that range of forty percent to seventy five percent. And I think that's what the intent of the redevelopment plan was, that retail locations, commercial locations, entranceways, you would have this substantial glass to allow for visibility into the building and out of the building for eyes on the street. So I think we meet that that in that intent. So I I think the the original building, phase one, has a similar arrangement at the at the ground floor and along the base. And I think you can, if you've gone by that building, you certainly see how that that building activates the street and is is inviting and definitely meets the intent of this requirement. So I think, again, here, you have a situation where the intent of the redevelopment plan has been met. These buildings are going to be an excellent addition to the built environment of this area, and the benefits substantially outweigh any detriment. There is an issue or a discussion about the the step the step back. And I wanted to discuss this 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 requirement of the redevelopment plan, although I feel that it it may not even be there, it may not even be a need for a design waiver or a variance in this regard. Because there is an optional way to look at meeting this requirement. Within the redevelopment plan, there's a section, section six, paragraph B point one. And that requires a step back of ten feet from all sides of the base. However, there's also a reference in the paragraph above that, which is paragraph, which is section six as well, the paragraph eight point three. And that references a recommendation to provide visual cues within the base of the building, such as cornices, belt coursing, changes in glass to solid ratio and other design features can be architecturally addressed. And I and I think that the design architect did an excellent job in demonstrating that through the use, for instance, of the masonry at the cafe, the masonry at some of the other lower levels, and then breaking into different colors of horizontal courses. And you can and therefore, the visual interest and the change in the horizontal planes has been created through these architectural features versus the step back. And what the the plan actually specifically states is that if this option that that's found in section six, eight point three, is utilized, then the requirement of section six, B point one are considered to be met. So I think that we've accomplished that. You know, however, if if it is felt that we need to have this a deviation for this. I I think that it's it's clear that the intent of the redevelopment plan is being met. There's no substantial detriment from from not having the ten foot setback everywhere. As the as the architect, as the architect also mentioned, there are setbacks at the ground plane that in every instance but one, where it's, I think it's four inches off, there is actually a ten foot setback to mitigate any negative impact from that ten foot step back not being provided. And that one place where it's four inches short is actually along the private street at Bay Street, which is being widened. So we're all, we're already providing additional air, light, open space. So there's really no substantial detriment from granting that deviation. And the the step backs at the top of the base are certainly met. There's several ways that it could be accommodated. And one and one of which is to have at least from the two sides, to have a step back of forty feet. The architect has shown how we we clearly meet that. So I think that in this case, too, we have a benefits outweigh the detriments. The signage variances, I think, again, are sort of a technicality because the signs, the sign requirements discussed, the signs being on public streets or public rights of way. And a lot of these streets are private. But nonetheless, they function as 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 public rights of way to the person walking up and down or driving up and down Hudson Street or Bay Street. It's 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 a public thoroughfare, regardless of the fact that it's privately owned. Similarly, the Greenway that connects Hudson and Green Street is really a pedestrian extension of Morgan Street. I've walked up and down that that Greenway many, many times, and it functions completely as a as a public space, a public thoroughfare, so so to speak. So the problem is that most of our signage is on private rights of way or private thoroughfares versus the the public, and that's really where the variance comes from. But in terms of the number of signs, nine retail signs is certainly not excessive. A lot of these locations of the retail or commercial, the cafe use are corners, are corner locations where signage on both both frontages are appropriate, notwithstanding the fact that they might be private thoroughfares. It's so when you look at the the five or so spaces that are there, the multiple frontages that are there, nine is certainly not an excessive number of part of the signages. And and you also need to look at the the size. The size requirement is that no more than ten percent of the facade to which they're affixed, and we and we meet that. So again, I think this is a well designed signage package. It's not excessive, and the sizes meet the intent of the the redevelopment plan. That goes as well for the residential residential signage. We have two two entrances. They're on two different streets. So having the two Herbie signs instead of the one is important. The inclusion of the street address is necessary and required in in the two different locations. And then around on Green Street, there are those two other functions, the trash and recycling and the not the parking access, the loading area, that need to be identified for vehicles coming and going. So the signage, although there's four signs versus the the two, they're dispersed around the building, not all on one side. It's just, it's not excessive. And I think that the then in that regard, that variance can be granted as well. Again, the project in general meets so many of the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan and provides so many other benefits that the benefits substantially outweigh any minor detriment. And the last has to do with the forestry, the forestry standards. Again, we are, we're sort of a little bit hamstrung by the the utilities along Green Street. I think the landscape architects done an excellent job of dispersing the trees that couldn't be, that can't be put on Green Street around the site. There has been substantial improvement to the Greenway between Hudson and Green Streets. There's been extensive improvements to the streetscape on Bay Street, Hudson, as as well as the Greenway. So all those factors, I think, mitigate any minor detriment that may result from the the inability to put the trees on on Green Street. So again, here, we have a so I I think on on balance, you can see that this project really meets many goals, many objectives, many of the purposes of the redevelopment plan. And will will but will be another step in implementing the master plan for for this area in in terms of completing the successful redevelopment of this area as well. And that concludes my testimony.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Colling. I have no questions on Mr. Colling's testimony. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
So that, I thank you for the board's indulgence here, and that that completes our our presentation. I I just would note if and when considering this application, if if you would consider the comment I made regarding the the on-street lighting on along Green Street that was in the J C Engineering's memo, comment number twenty one, that we believe that the on the building, beyond on the building lighting is sufficient.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Do you have a closing statement you want to make?
I would like Commissioner Chairman Langston. I have a quick question for the architect, if it's possible. I'm sorry to come out of line like this. Collins just reminded me with the glass of the building and the glass being seen from the inside and outside. And I remember this project, the first time we looked at the first time this project in two thousand and twelve. One of the questions that was brought up to the architect was the curtains for the project. Are they going to be matching curtains inside this project going throughout the whole building all the way up? And instead of having all type of mismatched curtains and stuff, are they going to just kind of a thing that we had back then? And these type of projects with all glass, that it wouldn't be where people are just putting different type of flags or bed sheets as window curtains. I don't know if anybody could answer that question for me. How they plan to do that on the inside of each?
Sure, Commissioner, we we intend to match proposed matching blinds for all the units so that they are consistent with phase one as well.
Phase one's there, because I remember phase one, that was one of the requests that we had. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for your time. Nice presentation.
Good memory. I'm impressed. All right, anybody else? All right, and Mr. Harrington, I was just asking if you want to make a closing statement now? Do you want to make after public comment?
I mean, I'll just make it briefly. As I said in my introduction, I mean, this is really another signature project for for Jersey City, and it's, you know, the board, you know, I note that this really is a continuation of what was before the board in two thousand and twelve and approved as the master plan. So it's a continuation of that. You know, in the same really dynamic architecture. And we think it's, you know, a great project, and and the relief we're requesting are all similar to what was requested in two thousand and twelve.
All right, thank you, counsel. And if we could, let's stop that screen share, please. All right, thank you, everybody. So at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. Finally, if anybody here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Promoting Kevin Brown.
Hey, Kevin, how you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Great. I just want to swear you in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you have any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Sure. My name is Kevin Brown. I'm the executive vice president of thirty two B J, the Service Employees International Union. Our address is four ninety four Broad Street, Newark, New Jersey.
Mr. Brown, good evening. We have three minutes for you. I'd like to not interrupt your three minutes. We've stated many times on the record, a few of us are union members, but we have no jurisdiction over any kind of labor disputes. We encourage labor harmony across all the projects we approve. But this board has no jurisdiction over that. But again, this is your public comment, and I'll start your time for three minutes.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman Langston, and good evening to the members of the Jersey City Planning Board. As I said, my name is Kevin Brown. I'm the New Jersey State Director and the Executive Vice President of thirty two B J of the Service Employees International Union. We represent thirteen thousand members in New Jersey and a hundred and seventy five thousand members up and down the East Coast who do property service work, taking care of properties such as this one. And I want to make it very clear, Chairman, from the onset, I know that you've cut some of my colleagues off in the past, that the purpose of my testimony tonight is entirely to the point of addressing the planning board to do more to ensure that this project aligns with the goals of Jersey City's master plan. Again, I want to repeat, my entire testimony will be to the point to ensure that this board makes sure that this project aligns with the Jersey City Master Plan. And the documents that the boards, that the planners submitted, that the developers submitted, they said that this aligns with the Jersey City Master Plan. However, because of one of the two developers, Iron State, who is a co-developer on this project, I would suggest otherwise. Therefore, I believe my testimony is relevant and should not be cut off. The Jersey City Master Plan aims to create a more equitable and prosperous city through its land use, open space, and policy measures. The Jersey City Master Plan is a goal of reconciling, quote, barriers to equity, whether physical, economic, or social in nature. And it emphasizes, quote, essential services and the importance of universal access to basic amenities, unquote. In fact, subcontracted workers at many of this developer, Iron State, building across Jersey City have no access to basic amenities needed to thrive in Hudson County.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, this is Councilor Lampy. I am going to cut you off. I understand that you're attempting to tie into the master plan, but the master plan has to go to the development of property. It does not go to the inequities within the labor force. So if you can somehow articulate the inequity in the development without touching on labor and the labor force, I'll give you that opportunity. But I think your position is clear. I understand your position. I don't know how we get there out of the master plan and the goals and objectives of the master plan for the development of property in the city. So without touching upon labor.
I'm not, the point is, I'm not going to talk about labor unions here. I'm going to talk about this developer's practices and its practices. If the master plan, and I quote, has a goal of reconciling barriers to equity, whether physical, economic, or social in nature, and emphasizes, quote, essential services and the importance of uni universal access to basic amenities. That's what the master plan says, no?
It says that. What does that have to do with this particular?
Okay.
Business.
Fair enough.
The business practice have nothing to do with that. It's in the land use context.
I understand that. But the developer in in their proposal to you, for this proposal to this committee, has specifically said that their use, their govern, that their proposal is governed by the guiding principles of the Jersey City Master Plan. Therefore, you need to take into account the Jersey City Master Plan and what it says in it. And if you don't,
Without a doubt.
You're ignoring your own principles. Now, if that's what if that's what you want to do.
Plan absolutely counts. That guides development in the city, absolutely.
And that's how I'm testifying, because this developer simply does ignores those basic premise principles that are stated.
Ignore that. How does this developer ignore it?
This developer's practices are contrary to the goals of the Jersey City Master Plan, and therefore, my testimony is relevant.
Tell me how, because the project hasn't even begun yet.
Well, because we know this developer's history.
I don't know this developer's history in terms of whatever it is you're speaking to.
Well, I'm going to testify. If you would let me to continue, I would explain that.
I'm giving you that opportunity, but I I've seen this movie before, as they say. Talk about how this project is in contradiction of the master plan.
Because the developer does not allow, in in fact, creates inequities. Because the developer does not allow, in in fact, creates inequities and creates division within the community, violates laws such as the stand.
How in this project?
This developer's record speaks for itself. And then I would like to remind the committee of this developer's record of violating Jersey City laws. And therefore.
Law is being violated by this project.
By this developer.
This project.
Well, they that we don't know yet because it hasn't been approved yet. And that's why my testimony is relevant.
Oh, boy. How could it be relevant?
Because if the developer, if you, for instance, have a history of not providing adequate education to the children in the schools. And then you're going to say, okay, well, let's continue providing that same inadequate education. You would say, wait a minute, maybe we need to do something different.
I'm not even following you, sir.
If you Yogi Berra had a saying. He said, if you keep on going on the road you're going on, eventually you're going to get where you're going to. If you keep continuing to ignore the contradictions between developers' history as well as the contradictions that history is within the Jersey City master plan. Therefore, you're going to create a system that continually creates inequality and and barriers to equity in Jersey City. The point is, you need to eliminate those barriers. And if this developer has a bad history, then you need to point that out.
That's not what this board has to do. This developer has the right to make the application. This board will judge the application on its merits, using the master plan as its guiding principle. Mr. Colling testified how this project is consistent with the master plan. I'm asking you to tell me how this project is not consistent with the master plan. And the only thing that I've heard is the developer's prior history tells us.
Yeah.
It's not consistent with the master plan.
That's right. And so you need to say, well, wait a minute. If this developer's history is not consistent, maybe we should be asking some of those same questions.
That's not for this board. What you're talking about is a labor issue.
Mr. Lampy, you just.
Question.
No, you just stated that the board responsibility, the planning board's responsibility is to be in conformance with the Jersey City best plan, right?
Tell me how the project is inconsistent without telling me about the developer's known history.
How can you? How can you distinguish between the plan and that the person and the and the entity which is doing the the development? They're the one in the same.
They're not one in the same. How is the project? How is the project not consistent with the master plan? The only thing I've heard from you is this alleged known history of the developer for violating laws. I don't even know what that means.
Well, because you haven't allowed me to even explain what that means and their history.
Tell me what laws are being violated.
The the this developer, Iron State Development.
Go ahead.
Violated the Jersey City standard wage law.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Can I finish?
You cannot continue. We are not going to hear the labor dispute at this board.
This is not a labor dispute.
It's a labor issue.
Okay, we are way over that three minutes.
Fail.
All right, so let's continue on with public comment. Once again, if anybody wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Promoting Catherine Moore.
The public has the right to talk. The public has the right to testify how the project is inconsistent with the master plan. But for purposes of the record, this board's purview is not to hear and discuss inequities in labor and disputes between labor and developers. It's not appropriate. It's not within our jurisdiction and the record needs to be clear on that.
And let me be the first to say, if there was a way to do it, I would have been doing it for years now.
Would have been looking at that. Who would have been looking at that a long time ago or even other developers? So it's not a matter of what we are here. And I'm going to say this on the record as a union brother. I don't, I have to look at the developer and the part, not the developer, the project. And just for those union brothers that are out there listening and not understanding, it turns my stomach when I have to do this. But that's why I'm on this board. To look at a project for what the project is to the plan and for Jersey City. Yes, I wish other things were that way one day. Maybe you'll see me in the street walking around and we could talk about it.
Yeah. But obviously not in the context of this application. Okay, anyway, let's move on with public comment, please. I think we have Catherine Moore up.
Hi, Catherine, also you in?
Hello.
Hello. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Catherine Moore, K A T H R Y N M O O R E. I live at one forty Bay Street.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, good evening. I'm going to start your timer three minutes.
Okay, I have a, I might just go down the list and then you guys can kind of decide what you want to do, but there's a whole bunch of little things, just because we've been around Urbey one for a little while. We do have questions about the garbage collection and compacting and leaving trash on the street. We're kind of wondering if the same thing was going to happen with Urbey two and three, if there will be a compactor, which I see that there is a compactor. I'm just wondering if it's going to be private collection or if it's going to be city collection. Noting that Plaza five, there is a loss of a children's playground in that area. And it's now only the dog run is remaining. If the dog run is a benefit to the two new towers, why can it not be put up on the ninth floor and the playground can remain on the ground level? Because we are lacking a lot of playgrounds, a public playground in the neighborhood. Just kind of maybe also adding a few more benches underneath the shade tree, similar to what they have on floor nine under the shade trees there. That would be kind of nice. Who's maintaining the tables and the fixed seats, umbrellas, shade opportunities, etc. Is that going to be Plaza five or Urbey's plan? The trees that you can't put in, can you add them to Urbey one? Because Urbey one seems like it could have a lot more trees around it along Green Street. So there is an opportunity to maybe, you know, do something with that. I'm not sure if this affordable housing is even considered in this, so I'm not even going to get into that. The water retention, it seems like it could be bigger because this is a pretty small footprint and it takes up a lot of space. So some kind of subterranean stormwater capture harvest technology might benefit because of just the challenges we have with flooding in the area and water retention. With all the people coming in, harborside ferry service, can we have that returned and make it affordable to relieve the path congestion? Because there's also going to be more people, can we have stop signs at the light rail crossings? Instead of the traffic light, because the traffic light has never been timed with the train schedule, so you always have people dashing out there. It's if it's always a stop sign, then all vehicles, because they don't come very, you know, often, they should stop at the stop signs and the pedestrians should always have the right of way. The Sky Lounge would be great if that was something that could be opened up to the public because Jersey City doesn't have a nice rooftop lounge to observe, you know, the great views that the city has. Especially because we're all getting high rises put in front of us. It would be nice if there was some nice tall thing that we could sit on top of and enjoy the view too. As far as the parking, Urbey one, how is the parking going there? Is it full? Does that it's only private? Does that actually allow retail? The restaurants to have people park in there? Is that sort of an overflow in case Urbey two and three are are full? Is is the public ever allowed to lease spaces in these parking garages? And then I would like to say I'd like zone for permit parking for Hudson Street and Green Street to be removed from being able to get the zone for permit parking. Should this?
Can we, if we could wrap up, that was your three minutes.
I think I got to the bottom of the page, but it was a whole bunch of stuff because you guys talked about a lot.
Yes.
So I just didn't wanted to just make sure that I got my list and I can send this list to somebody if they'd like to look over it. But that's pretty much everything.
On your, on your list right now, I have garbage collection. I have the playground versus the dog run. I have benches under the shade trees. I have who's going to maintain those, the seating areas outside. If we could move the trees to Urbey one that were removed. Do you have a question on the water retention? If it's enough, they need underground. We have ferry service. We have a stop sign at the light rail. Public use of a rooftop lounge. And the question on the parking at Urbey one currently, and I think I missed the last one.
Basically, it's like, you know, once you have Urbey one and then you're going to have Urbey two and three, with all of that parking, you know, is there space for public parking for people that will come down to the waterfront? To enjoy the waterfront right now, you know, they're all parking on the 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 street parking and it would probably be nice to have someplace for the public to park if they come down to the waterfront. And this will just kind of add a little bit more congestion because more people want to visit their friends there. So what kind of abilities were already taxed in zone four? And having Hudson Street included in the zone for a built, you know, being able to get a zone for permit from Hudson Street and Green Street. But these are not residential buildings. These are and these are also private streets. So we're not quite sure why Hudson Street is allowed to get a zone for permit because they're taking up all the spaces that the residents would prefer to use.
Okay, thank you. We'll try and get all these answered for you.
Thank you. Actually, and and everything looked really good. I was around for the two thousand and twelve and Urbey was a nice addition. We enjoy it, but we'd like to make sure you improve it, especially with the trash.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right, Council, do you want to knock off a couple of these on the list? Or at least address?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can as many as I can. Garbage garbage collection is all internal and with the compactors. That is right off of Green Street. There is, yeah, we are proposing a dog run, but the playground is being removed. That that area was designed in conjunction with Plaza five and their owners. So that that will not be part of the new improvements. The maintenance of the plaza areas is all part of a condo association among the harborside properties. So there are specific responsibilities as to the property owners as to addressing that. Oh, sorry. And the trees, I mean, Urbey one, I I can't really answer that. That's 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 not nothing that that we've considered. I mean, I can just take it back to my client and if they believe that there's opportunities for more landscaping and it's appropriate, you know, they'll review that. Ferry service, service, that's that's not our issue. I mean, not, I'm not belittling it, belittling it, but that's that would obviously be, you know, a benefit to to the proposed tenants here if it's if approved. Stop sign, I think that would be, it's really more of an engineering issue for the Jersey City engineering. Skyline lounge open to the public. Yeah, unfortunately, that it's not going to be open to the public. It's it's a tenant amenity space there. You know, it creates issues if you're you have have a common area open to the public. The Urbey one parking right now, yes, it is full. So there is no parking available to the public and that's not envisioned that that the the parking in this building would be made available. Lastly, I think is is the permit parking or zone parking? Again, that's that's not our issue. That's really more a global council issue.
Gotcha.
I think I.
I think you hit a mo. Okay, all right, let's move on with public comment if we could. Once again, if you want to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Promoted Joshua Robinson.
Joshua, I'll just swear you in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Yeah, my name is Joshua Robinson, J O S H U A R O B I N S O N. I currently actually live in New York, eighty eight Greenwich Street, but I'm moving to Jersey City in less than a month. So actually, it's in the lot that is going to be next door at eighty eight Morgan Street.
So your timer, three minutes there, Mr. Robinson.
Not sure if that disqualifies me from making public comments.
Absolutely not.
Okay. And actually, I guess my 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 commenting is more questions, but also comments to understand the scope of the construction portion of the project. Certainly related to the variance being requested. The the variance for number of floors or stories. In my mind invariably will require longer construction time or at least more construction material. So I'm a little curious as to what the proposed plans are with respect to timeline on the construction. And then methods to mitigate noise and traffic congestion and other environmental considerations with regard to the development project. Got this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Robinson, and welcome to Jersey City.
Thank you.
All right, Council, do we have a timeline yet on construction and is it? You know, obviously, we're just hearing this as one application, but are the two towers phased? Are they going up at the same time?
One, one is going to be built first. The idea is to start the foundation in the base and then then start building the tower that's furthest east. And then once that's topped off, then they will maybe start the the second one. And there's a, there's a sequencing of events where they want to then put the skin on the building and and then you know, try to get the other one enclosed first and then then occupy the first tower. Because then you don't have to worry about any, any construction debris falling. So all the work is enclosed. So in short, I think, you know, they're they're hoping to to occupy the first tower in like twenty twenty six and I think the others twenty twenty seven. These are, you know, it's a long lead process, but you know, it you know, all the all the appropriate measures, yeah, Jersey City requires would be would be taken into account.
Okay, thank you. And anyone that has ever worked in construction, I'm sure those façades, the skins will go up right before the beginning of summer and it'll be wide open in the winter, so. All right, let's move on with public comment.
I have been trying to promote people and no one is accepting promotion. One moment. Promoting Erica Walker.
Where are you in? Okay, I'm doing all right. Thank you. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear any testimony you give is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Erica Walker, E R I C A W A L K E R, address five seventy eight Ocean Avenue, Jersey City.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Okay, I just wanted to second, hi, I just wanted to second, sorry, how my daughter went. The concern regarding parking and parking permits. I believe I heard that there were private streets throughout the development. Is that is that the case?
There were private streets that are adjacent to it, yes.
Okay, and the address of the development, is that on the private street? Or will any of the addresses that the residents will use be on that private street?
I believe the proposed addresses are along Hudson Street. The private, it's a private street, Hudson Street.
Okay, so that is a way to alleviate the parking concern because if all of the residents address is on that private street, then that private street or those who have that private street address will not qualify for a zone parking permit because parking streets right as of right now, I believe. Sorry, Leah, be quiet for a second, okay? Private streets, as as far as I understand right now, do not qualify for zone permit parking. So that can be a way to alleviate the congestion of public parking. Right now, I actually, it's a, it's a two way site because we have another. There is another location where there are persons on private streets that need parking permits because the. there is another location uh where there are persons on private streets that need parking permits because the the establishment or the property does not offer enough parking for the residents, but if you are offering enough parking for your residents, um I, I just, that's just my concern, I'm not saying I have the, I have the cure for it. Um, but I just wanted to have a better understanding of the private streets and if the address was on that private street because it affects zone parking anyway, and I would just like to have a conversation and get ahead of the ball um with zoning and the parking, uh, um, the, the parking department um before creating more problems regarding parking and, and being, having access to parking permits.
All right, thank you, Ms. Walker, we appreciate it, um. Um, Liz, can you comment on that? I'm not sure if you've ever asked that question for um if, if the address is on a private street, are they allowed to have parking permits?
Um, Tanya, I saw you turn your camera on, I don't know if you have any insight.
I turned my camera on because I was lured by the Davy laugh.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. Um, but uh I don't believe that there's any permit or any kind of authority that we have uh citywide uh through the parking authority to grant permit parking on private streets.
Okay, understood, thank you. All right, if we could uh move on with public comment, I see Catherine Moore's hand is up again, I'm sorry.
And we actually were able to.
We have Kate.
Caitlin, yeah.
Oh, okay, and uh Ms. Moore, I'm sorry, we can't have you up twice on the same application.
Again, I'll swear you in, all right, if you raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Sure, my name is Caitlin Noselli, that's C A I T L I N N O S E L L I. Um, and I live at eighty-eight Morgan Street.
Thank you.
Ms. Noselli, good evening, uh we have three minutes for you.
Good evening, I thank you for taking my question and for the very thorough presentation. Um, I learned a lot about what what you're planning for the community, um and it's, it's really beautiful, um and I'm excited to see it evolve. Um, my question is, uh, as you may have heard with my dress, uh in regards to being not just a Jersey City resident, but a very local resident. Um, I live at eighty-eight Morgan Street, I'm a first-time homeowner, I've been in the building for six months, so this is coming um, a little bit uh, uh of a surprise to me, and I'm curious to know, um I guess, what has, what can I expect in terms of the obstruction to my potential view with these buildings kind of popping up in front of me? We saw a lot of beautiful renderings, but none from the Morgan Street side of things. Um, and uh, you know, I tried to do some mapping on my own, seeing what's going to happen with the uh current public park area with the dog run and the playground, things like that. Um, you know, there was some discussion of of expanding the road on Bay Street, so I don't know if that pushes the entire project out further and it's going to, you know, further narrow that area. Um, but those are just some of the, the basic things uh I'm trying to understand just from a local property owner's perspective with views directly facing what would be um the two new towers. So, uh, I guess in short, um changes to the existing public element. I would ask for a rendering or a couple renderings from this side, you know, maybe coming up to the eighty-eight Morgan Street uh rooftop. Uh, if we could see some images from there. Um, and then, to the extent I can expect an impact to uh my property value. And that's all for me, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for hanging in there for us. Uh, counsel, I can't imagine we have any more renderings, given how many we saw tonight?
No, no, we don't. Um, and I don't know really how to address that, I mean, the views, I don't know uh where Ms. Noselli yeah, lives within the building, I mean, it, it just you know, you're gonna have two new towers up, um, you're still, Bay Street is still gonna be there. You're gonna have a separation between the buildings. Um, so, the, you know, I'm sure some views will be, will be blocked. Um, I can tell you mine will, um, it's right next to me, my, my office. Uh, but uh, you know, I can't tell you what, uh, what effect it will have over there, but as I said earlier, this has been ten years in the make.
Okay, thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to public comment, anybody else, if you want to comment on this application, please raise your hand. You're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and second, and public is closed. Um, Liz, you have, obviously you have comments, uh huh. You want to jump in?
Uh, yeah, yeah, just a couple of things. The uh variances and design waivers requested. Um, do not pose any commitment to the intent of the redevelopment plan or to the public good. Um, and are mostly oriented around uh the proposed form, program, and design aesthetics of the proposal. Um, ultimately result in a, in a strong design, um that I think will be very successful. Um, we staff report and then talk about some of the conditions that we discussed during the um uh the testimony.
Sure.
So, okay. Um, uh, and Chuck, can you confirm that you've reviewed the um staff report and um agree to the conditions?
Uh, yes, we, we do.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, so just for um the board, um we've determined that there would be five trees, um, so we're looking now at item six. Um, five trees that would have been able to be planted on Green Street that are not able to be due to utility conflicts. Uh, requesting a twenty-five hundred dollar payment in lieu for the five street trees. Um, also, as discussed previously, item seven in the staff memo addresses this area along Green Street where uh hopefully we'll be able to coordinate for additional planters um in coordination with P S E and G. Um, also adding um some privately owned public space signage, um ensuring that the public is um aware and comfortable that they could use the, the public space provided. Um, the additional conditions that we discussed or, or in response to uh some of the comments um recommending that the applicant work with staff regarding the proposed fence at the dog run. Uh, which appears to look similar to a chain link fence. So um, I'm proposing that um you share materials with me. And if staff doesn't find the proposed fencing appropriate, that the applicant will work with staff to select an appropriate material. Um, and then, um, I think for the um, the on-street lighting for Green Street, um, I think I'd like to have city engineering review uh those proposed light levels once you have, have that um information. And then finally, um, this, this approval will recognize the um two hundred and seventy-two parking spaces proposed. Um, however, if the applicant um looks to pursue a valet parking option, um, they would be seeking an amendment and we'd ask that they, in doing so, provide a parking management plan. And those are the conditions.
Okay, counsel, are you okay with those conditions, I think, uh?
Yes.
They're in line with everything we talked about tonight. Um, and counsel, if uh maybe you could follow through with the applicant, um, would be great to move some of those trees to uh Irving one if possible, if not possible, I understand, but uh, let's at least make the effort.
Yeah, well, I'll discuss it, it's two different owners, but uh, well, we'll discuss it.
Gotcha, okay, thank you, appreciate it. Um, all right, it's time, um if we need to have uh any board discussion, we can have a board discussion or all enter into motion if uh nobody has anything else.
If I, if I, I'm sorry, just uh, I, I was looking at my notes. Um, Liz, did you say with, with the um valet parking, we would provide the parking management plan for your review and engineer, city of engineering review, not not have, have to come back to the board if it's acceptable to you, is that? Was that what I heard?
Uh, yeah, that's what I, that's what I propose.
Okay.
Um, so essentially, an administrative amendment.
Uh, administrative to the point where it would go to the planning department, also the engineering department. And if they determine, either one determined that it created deviation, you'd have to come back to the board.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, at this time, I actually want to make a motion to approve the first part of this application, case P two-two dash zero-nine-five, which is the block eleven-six-zero-three, lot thirty-one dot zero-one and thirty-one dot zero-two, motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for case P two-two dash zero-nine-five.
Um, also, just checking, should we also say zero-nine-four? Or, or keep thinking?
That's gonna be another motion, Liz.
Oh, oh, I apologize, gotcha.
Yeah, that'll be a separate motion.
Right now, we're voting on the site plan.
Uh, we're voting on the sub.
Subdivision, yeah.
Okay, sorry, okay, uh Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
For the subdivision, I vote aye.
Okay, uh Commissioner Torres.
July, all right.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
I am the subdivision.
Great, okay, and then on to the site plan.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash zero-nine-four, this would be the site plan on block eleven-six-zero-three lot twenty-eight-thirty, thirty-one dot zero-one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Great, thank you, uh Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Listen, I love this from ten years ago. Uh, I think Commissioner Torres and maybe Chairman Langston were on the, at that time, uh maybe not.
It was not.
But um, I remember it then and being in awe of uh, you know, Mr. uh Vermulon's uh, you know, uh sort of idea and vision. I love the way the buildings sort of just dance with each other, it looks like a, I know this is, this is hokey. But they look really good, uh especially if you're seeing it from Manhattan over here, I mean, you know, obviously the, the Jersey City skyline has drastically changed, uh and this, these two additions are just gonna be such a beautiful addition to to that area, so kudos to the whole team, Mr. Shim, uh Mr. Vermulon, I love, love, love what you guys are doing, Mr. Herrick. Um, uh, and I am very excited, I vote aye, I think this is uh, is um in um accordance with the master plan and the variances requested are exactly what we need to have there. Uh, and uh, I vote aye gladly, and good luck, let's, let's not wait another ten years, I don't wanna I don't know that I'll be here, but I don't want to be seeing this project again in ten years from now. So would I.
Um, Commissioner Torres.
Um, before I make a com- another comment on this, I will make just a one comment for the record, though, um Mr. Harrington, if we could look into the um whoever's picking up the garbage, I know the garbage is being by compact of it privately, but it seems like somebody in the neighborhood, people in the neighborhood think that it gets out of control sometimes. So whoever's doing it privately, uh maybe to look into that as this project goes forward. That problem doesn't become a greater problem. Um, but with that, just like Dr. uh Vice Chair Gonzalez said, um we were very excited for weeks after this project came to um the board ten years ago, we talked about it after the meeting and the uh, it was like a beautiful view, um. I think I kept the rendons that they gave us for quite a few years and I was showing my kids that. And saying, this ain't built yet, this is what you're gonna see over there, you know? Um, and um, it was really exciting time for that because it was, it was different and like um, Vice Chair Gonzalez said, what have, what a change to the skyline. If looking from other side, this way, um, I remember, I remember when it was the four buildings, right? And they decided to go with the three, you know, um with that, um, I wish the developer a lot of luck with this project, I hope it gets the speedy development. And that uh, it does come through for them, and I do hope that um we don't have to wait another seven or ten years to talk about another phase of it as it moves along. Um, because as architects have a beautiful vision. So let them get started on something else. And move along from this project, so at least we ought to, uh build something that's even better for the viewer of Jersey City, that's what I would hope, so I vote a big aye.
Uh, Commissioner Gangadin.
So my comments would be brief, these renderings are really, really beautiful, um thanks to the team for putting this together, it's a great addition to complete the area. This is a real highlight to Jersey City. And we're so proud of what, what's happening here in Jersey City, so my vote is aye.
Commissioner Allen.
A nice project, I vote aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
I want to commend Chuck Harrington for his selfless advocacy for the project, given that his views will be impacted. Um, I can't help think that in ten years that we may see if a trend is persisting, we'll see uh four buildings and given the lack of acrimony and blowback from the public and the enormity of the project to have gone through so smoothly. Uh, I'd love to see more projects like this for Jersey City and I wholeheartedly vote aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Chairman, you're uh muted.
Thank you, I was, um, I have to say, Mr. Harrington, it, I can only handle one of these applications once every ten years.
I hear you.
Very detailed, um, you know, uh, I, I appreciate the detail, uh it makes our job a lot easier, you know, our questions are answered before it even gets to us asking you. Uh, so I appreciate the, you know, the, the candor there and um yeah, I agree with the other commissioners, uh, you know, this is a great view for the skyline. Um, I, I think I was on the board at some point when maybe it was a site plan amendment, something, I, I remember having the prints of all three buildings and uh you know, I'm glad that they're finally coming to fruition, um. It's a great project, I think the deviations requested are completely in line with the site, um, I think they meet the goals of the master plan. I have no problem with any of the deviations tonight and um I'm gonna vote aye.
Great, thank you. Um, so for the subdivision and the site plan, um, all are in favor, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Um, Mike, you want to take a five?
Sure. Yeah.
Oh, that's appropriate at this point. Um, if we could, I'll reach out to Commissioner Cruz if he's still awake, I've seen.
I'm here.
All right, thank you, and uh back in five, it's nine oh nine, we'll be back at nine fourteen. And uh, I think our night's coming to an end quick, but uh, we'll see you in a few. All right, can we come to order again, everybody, please? All right, Mike, are you ready to go? Awesome, thank you. All right, let's, uh, move on to item eleven. Can't believe I'm saying that a quarter after nine, that one on eleven, uh, this case, uh, P two two dash one zero three. Uh, this is the review and discussion of a proposed amendments to zoning map and land development ordinance regarding district boundaries, zoning and design standards, article five, definitions three forty five dash six, site plan thresholds three forty five dash sixteen, and creation of the affordable housing overlay amendments include fully restating article five, but are not limited to the creation of RC one district, RC two district, formerly the R two D, uh, RC three district, formerly R five, and the expansion of the EO district and R three district. Uh, this was sponsored by sitting, sorry, by city planning staff and formal action will be taken tonight.
Uh, good evening, commissioners and board members. Um, I believe Tanya was gonna jump on here. I'm not sure, uh, where she is right now, but I will do the introduction. Um, so first off, uh, we, we noticed, um, the surrounding municipalities, uh, sending notice to, to their, uh, the municipal clerks. Uh, if we could just, um, take a look at those notices, Sonto.
That's correct, Matt. You, uh, provided the notice. I've reviewed the notice. We can mark those as A one for purpose of the record and will note that the notices were sent in accordance with the.
And, uh, I think for the majority of our presentation tonight, um, uh, we, uh, prepared a presentation, uh, which was not published to, uh, the open data portal. Um, so we're gonna be bringing that up in a moment. It's, uh, forty nine slides. Um, and, uh, we can mark that in evidence as well. So I'm gonna start sharing my screen and, uh, hand the floor over to Tanya.
So Matt, we'll mark those as A two. That's the forty nine slide presentation. Obviously, it's prepared by, uh, the department and therefore is in your possession and you'll keep it with the floor.
All right, Tanya, you have the floor.
Are we good? Are we starting?
Now we are.
You're on.
Okay, wasn't sure. Give me one second. Man, I'm gonna share my screen just so I can kind of go by my own pace, if that's fine.
Go for it.
Same thing. You guys see it okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yes.
Perfect. Um, so, uh, we've been, uh, since we had the last master plan adoption, which I, at this point, I can't even remember. I guess it was early twenty twenty two. Um, we've been working on implementing the changes that were recommended in that plan. Um, in, in the master plan. The, what we're gonna kind of go through tonight is the first phase of that. Um, and so we are, um, calling it corrective zoning. We thought that this would be kind of, um, the low hanging fruit, so to speak. Uh, the areas of the city that were zoned are one um, and that were most obviously not R one. Um, and that is kind of our phase one. So tonight, we're gonna walk you through some of the background as in, uh, how we got here through the master plan, um, uh, some of the history of those areas. Um, and then, of course, the consistency of the master plan. So I'm just gonna start. Uh, I'm sure you've seen this before. Uh, when we did our master plan, we looked at four different lenses. One is that connectivity, mobility, economic opportunity, social equity and climate resilience. Um, you could really argue that all of the changes that we're making tonight, proposing tonight, uh, touch on all of these things. But there's three in particular that I really want to call out that I think really kind of hit home for this. The first is the economic opportunity. Um, you're gonna hear me say a lot if you haven't already, um, and will be for the next year about establishing that fifteen minute city at neighborhood cores. Uh, and what is a neighborhood core? Uh, we can talk about a little bit more later, but neighborhood cores are those smaller areas within Jersey City that have these organic kind of, uh, commercial corridors and the resident areas that are around them. We hear really frequently, you know, Jersey City is a a city of neighborhoods. Um, and so reestablishing those neighborhood cores and bringing back, um, assets and opportunities uh, to those areas is really important and not just, you know, having that neighborhood be built up, but providing a diversified economy, the economic opportunity. The second, of course, is that other part to that, that social equity. Um, we found that, um, through, you know, I think a bunch of, um, the research that we've done and getting to this point, um, that, um, a lot of these areas were what I'm calling unzoned. Um, and these were areas that were historically these small, uh, mixed use neighborhoods. Um, and they over time became unzoned, unzoned, commercial and purely residential. Um, and that impact, uh, really left the communities behind, um, without any kind of resources. Here's a, you know, Brookings City grade study. Um, I want to read some of, uh, the, the points that was made in the study about the devaluation of assets in historically black neighborhoods. So, um, the commercial real estate market is highly unequal. The top one percent of households that own uh, commercial real estate control eighty one percent of that category's value. By contrast, the top one percent of households that own non-primary residential property control forty nine percent. Owner occupied housing wealth is the most equal with the top one percent owning sixteen percent of that value. The general unequal structure of commercial real estate is seen also in the wide racial disparities in real estate property. So only three percent of black households own non-residential commercial real estate compared to eight white percent. Black wealth disproportionately relies on housing. The share of national wealth black people own is three times higher for owner occupied real estate than it is for non-residential commercial real estate. So these neighborhoods that were, um, changing over time and we were, uh, dealing with, you know, white flight and suburbanization, um, the folks that we were leaving behind were disproportionately being affected. And creating that social inequity over time. And the last is the connectivity, mobility, which is, um, the, though some of that, the more obvious and kind of going back to that fifteen minute city, which is that if we're really trying to get to a point as a city where we're going to be less reliant on cars, we really need to have neighborhoods where people can access those resources within walking or within transit or within bike. So there's a lot of images on this page, but just to kind of give you an overall of what's happening. Um, we are gonna go through some of the recommendations that were in the master plan for this phase one. Um, and these are some of the things. So tonight, Matt is really gonna talk to you about the definition changes that we're gonna be making. He's not gonna be talking to you about the site plan, uh, how we're gonna make adjustments to when, um, an application comes before a board or when an application can be reviewed by a zoning official. Um, the bigger things is that we're taking the entire land development ordinance, um, and we are, uh, restating it, which means that we're completely redoing it. I think I can say for all of us, when we say things like R five or R two D, you know, we're used to them and we know what they mean, but we also know that there's not kind of any logic to it. Um, we know that maybe numbers should go in order of density. And so in order to do that, we're kind of rewriting the zoning, rewriting the zone, um, names for RC one, RC two, that's residential, commercial one, which would be residential, commercial with the lowest density, residential, commercial two, which is the mid, which is actually R two D. So R two D will now be RC two. Um, and R five, which kind of, uh, also didn't make sense in that whole order, will now be RC three. And so you'll have a nice clean category of residential, commercial. These are, uh, areas that are still primarily residential, but do have commercial. That's completely separate from NC, which we can talk about later. Um, and they're in order of density. Um, that's what we're focusing on tonight. In the fall, we'll be moving forward with phase three. Um, and it's important tonight that we get this out in the open, that we start talking about it because we really want to begin the engagement in that. It's going to be a lot of, um, on the ground, walking tours, uh, meeting with associations, meeting with residents. Um, because we need to make our huge changes to the R one, all the issues that have been brought out to us over the years. We'd like to make corrections to R two and we want to make corrections to R three. Um, and the other final thing will be, uh, rezoning the commercial automotive along the western part of Communipaw um, and the, uh, one thirty nine state highway. What you see on your right, the twenty twenty master plan outreach you've seen before. So this is just a, uh, reminder of the work that we did when we were doing the master plan outreach. The outreach that we did for the phase one, uh, was definitely not as substantial. Um, we are, uh, kind of also banking on the work that we did for the master plan outreach. Um, so we did do walking tours with the neighborhoods who live directly within, uh, the streets that we are rezoning or upzoning or not upzoning or corrective zoning, rezoning. That's Old Bergen and Danforth, um, Mallory Avenue and Upper Boulevard and Summit Avenue. We did that with, uh, the council people as well. Uh, we emailed separately to these associations who either A would be, um, having the new RC one as a part of their neighborhood, or, um, if we're making any changes to the, uh, R two D, now RC two, uh, we let them know, along with the Village Neighborhood Association, who primarily is within the R five, which will now be the RC three. The map on your left kind of is a larger scale of all the areas that you did. I think when you look on the map on your left, you see that we really did a citywide look at this. We spent months, all the planners spent months in the field surveying each and every one of these sites, um, physically, um, but also through the tax records, um, and just kind of backing up, um, old historical, um, unit counts, uh, and what the zoning records were. So all of the information before you tonight has been thoroughly researched by the entire planning staff. Um, man, I'm just the lucky ones that get to present it. Um, but the, the, the core areas that we're really gonna be focusing on are, um, Upper Kennedy Summit Avenue, the northern part, Congress and Franklin, uh, the lower Palace Eight part. Then we're gonna go over to the west side. We're gonna do Mallory Avenue, West Side and Sterling, West Side where it comes all the way down, um, south to the south part of West Side. Sterling Avenue, which is nestled right in the middle, and I think Pete Brennan's bars on Sterling Avenue. Uh, Lower Jeff K and Old Bergen. Um, or as otherwise known as Ferris Triangle. And then finally, that, uh, donut hole downtown, uh, within the middle of the R five was always this R one donut hole. And so we'll be completing that, um, filling it in with the RC three zoning. I want to bring this back to, I think, the, the journey that we took in order to kind of figure out what the right zoning was. Um, in nineteen twenty, the master plan, the development plan, there was a goal to really kind of, uh, create, uh, a unified grid. Um, and their assessment was that because we were a city that evolved over the consolidation of these smaller communities, and I'm sure you've heard this before, you know, Greenville was its own community, uh, own, own city. You know, Jersey City was its different city than Hudson City and Bergen. Um, and Communipaw Lafayette. And so they decided at that point that, um, in order to redo our grid and to make this like more consolidated, organized grid would be impossible because we were so, uh, so much so, um, several distinct community centers. Um, and I call this out because I think it's, um, really factual to what we're doing now, which is kind of acknowledging that these community centers still exist, um, and bringing the zoning back so they, they can be revitalized. Kind of get the history, see what happens. Nineteen thirty eight, which is the first zoning map that we know of. Um, if you're looking on your left, you'll see the nineteen thirty eight. And you can see the areas that I've circled and those are the kind of the areas again that I talked about that we would be focusing on. And you can see the areas that I've circled, and those are the kind of the areas again that I talked about that we would be focusing on. And the black dotted lines show you that these were commercial neighborhoods, right? So you can see in the northern part by Palisade, by Summit, that these were areas that had ground floor, commercial, mixed use. You can see down on Mallory Avenue on the west side, also same thing. And down by Old Bergen and Danforth, you can see that there's a really strong commercial corridor right there. Couple of years later, the second zoning map that we're fully aware of after master plan was done shows very similar patterns, except in some instances, we're losing some of those neighborhood designation, those commercial designations, but not substantially. And then in nineteen seventy-one, nineteen seventy-four, we did a complete rezoning. And as a part of that, that zoning, that master plan really reflected what was happening at the time, which was that we had lost a lot of residents, a huge tax base in Jersey City. And in order to make an effort to, I think, consolidate and support other commercial areas, the commercial use as a permitted use from these historic community commercial centers was removed and only residential was permitted. So what you're seeing before you, what you're seeing, I guess, I call it just to, you know, swaths of white, right? As in colors, there's no more kind of punctuated zoning on Old Bergen or Danforth or the Ferris Triangle or on Mallory Avenue or on Summit or on Kennedy, all of these areas that had these, you know, cores, these, these commercial centers were now zoned out as to just residential. This is also another great example, right? The sixty-three zoning map shows you that Summit Avenue again was a business district. In the middle, you have your master plan that then helped us do the nineteen seventy-one zoning map. And with the, with the existing land use, the comprehensive master plan that you're seeing in the middle, what it's showing you is the orange is showing you that the presence of commercial, right? The yellow means that it's residential and the orange is commercial. So in nineteen sixty-six, when we were doing the master plan, we acknowledged this was a commercial corridor. You can even see it on Kennedy Boulevard here. And then you can see the intention. This is the eighty-six map, but it did not change significantly from the seventy-one map. And you can see that the intention was to remove that use from that area. Same thing here on Old Bergen, Old Bergen and Ferris Triangle. You can see up in the, kind of the upper part of this. Again, call back to the sixty-three map, showing you that, you know, kind of diversified neighborhood core. You can see the pictures on the bottom. If you drive down Old Bergen, I'm sure you recognize some of these, but Danforth Avenue. A lot of the buildings have kept a lot of their character. But if you look up at kind of the picture on the top, right? You can kind of see the impact of the R one zoning, which is to say that when the buildings were vacant after a while, or they were abandoned and maybe torn down subsequently, they were replaced with the zoning that was permitted at the time, which is, still is actually permitted, the one and two family zone. So you would have commercial corridors that would have been broken up by three-story garage-centric to family homes. I, I call out this picture because when we were doing our walking tours, one of I think the, the greatest walking tours that we did was, was Old Bergen. Because it's such a great mix of people who've lived there for such a long time, from all different parts of Greenville. And as we were walking past this portion of Old Bergen, if you're looking on the bottom, the present. Somebody had pointed out that there was a family that had owned all of these buildings. And there was a jewelry store, you know, a deli, a meat market. And in the eighties, they lost their insurance because they were no longer, the insurance company would no longer insure them because they were a liability. So the part of that is true, right? We've heard of redlining, that's not something we're not familiar with, but redlining also happened with commercial uses. But insurance companies, like we deal with right now with licensing, really depend on use and permitted use. So if somebody's looking to re-up their license or re-up their insurance, it's very normal for them to reach out to a zoning official or to reach out to us and say, is this use permitted? If the building was destroyed, could the use be continued? And if the building is destroyed, can the use be continued? The answer is no. So there's a good chance that you do lose your insurance. So even though we've had these, you know, structures that continue to exist and were grandfathered by changing the zoning, not only were we then encouraging the loss of these buildings and the loss of these uses, but we were also making it possible for them to stay. This is just kind of a snapshot of again Sterling Avenue, Franklin up in the heights and Mallory Avenue over on the west side. And you can see, I think, the first thing that you see that kind of shouts out to you, right, is that these are not R ones zones. So the first kind of, the first zone that I really want to talk to you about is the RC one. And we're going to be doing the RC one, Mallory Avenue, Danforth, Old Bergen, Franklin Summit and Sterling. And here I'm gonna pop by kind of see some of the study that we did, like I said. The average density was anywhere between forty-four and seventy-two, the lot sizes. So this, I know there's a lot of work on this page. I don't want to kind of glaze you over, but I think the important thing to kind of call out on this is that the zoning replicates the buildings that are there in the RC one. So we are looking at a three-story building, thirty-five feet. That's sixty-five units an acre with a minimum lot size that matches a lot of the numbers that you saw before. Again, twenty, twenty-five, anywhere from fifty to seventy-two for density. The stepback, the standards are the ones that are very similar to what we used in RC two or that we used in RC three, which is that we're still looking at a rear yard setback that is equivalent to the thirty feet. What we're going to do, what we're starting to do, what this is the first time you'll hear about it, is that we're moving away from a solid number, solid number of feet, and we're moving to a percentage. And so this way it accounts for the fact that we have all sorts of lot sizes in Jersey City. And having a percentage of lot depth for a rear yard will always kind of keep us on that same path and keep everything proportional. The more important part, of course, is really the use, right? That's what we've been talking about. So in lots that are less than fifty, you can still have residential on the ground floor. We realized that this isn't going to be areas that are consistently going to have commercial uses. But we acknowledge that there's more than one and there's more than just on the corner. So when their lots are more than fifty, we're saying you can have residential uses on the ground floor behind twenty-five feet. And as long as that use on the, on the front is really an activated use, this language that you're seeing on the screen is language that I actually took from Journal Square, because I think Journal Square does a great job at really recognizing that we need active storefronts. And that doesn't always have to mean a commercial store. But it does have to mean not just a front door entrance onto a, a primary commercial street. Parking standards, so I'll be the first to talk about it, but we're going to keep talking about it. Is that it's one of the part of the master plan recommendation is that we stop having parking standards that are different in almost every zone, including every redevelopment plan, and we start talking kind of in the same language. And so we are moving to requiring it by bedrooms and point three per bedrooms. It's basically kind of just, you know, I'd say equals, I think, pretty much about point three in general to units, but there's a great calculation, which just says is that, you know, if you're looking at a building, a five-unit building, and it has fifteen bedrooms, you're going to do that fifteen bedrooms total times point three, four point five, and arounds to five spaces. So five spaces for a five-unit structure. So it works out in a lot of instances. The RC two, primary, which was the R two D, we did not make substantial changes to the R two D, but we did make changes to the R two D that we had been in discussion with, with the RNA with for a while. I can walk you through some of those changes in a second, but I do want to call out some of the areas that we are rezoning zoning for RC two. One of them is, of course, the northern parts of Kennedy, Congress Street, Palisade Avenue, parts of Palisade Avenue, parts of Palisade Avenue will also be RC one. We did make some changes based on conversations that we had with Sergeant Anthony Neighborhood. Lower West Side and a part of Ocean Avenue that is currently zoned Cemetery. I think you are mostly familiar with the R two D zoning, so I won't go into it too much. I do want to make, just kind of call out some of the same things that I called out previously, which is that you can see that the average densities and the average lot area. Sorry. Average densities and average lot areas, some of the things that we did change in the RC two that were direct result of the conversations we had with the neighborhood in the Heights was that we increased the the, well, actually, we decreased the coverage, lock maximum building coverage in order to create, you know, had to have less coverage, have more scar, I'm sorry. Have more permeability. And we did make some standards to kind of regulate decks and terraces, kind of, kind of keep them smaller and make them a little bit more private in order to be less intrusive to the neighbors. RC three, which is R five, will now be RC three. We are rezoning the bubble in the middle of basically Hamilton Park, Bavonia as the RC three, and that'll become the same basically standards that I don't think we made any changes to the R five, except again for the rear yard setback, turning it into the percentage and the parking, turning it into the point three per bedroom. One area where I think we took a, a step further than just corrective zoning. And these are areas that we were called out on the master plan and areas that we had already been looking at for quite a while. Where the, the southern part of Broadway closer to four forty or to one and nine, and then the portions along the west side light rail line. And you can kind of see those pictures below the Morton Place, Carney Avenue and Fayette Street down by Broadway. These areas are currently zoned R one. So why did we look and zone them as R three? I guess a little bit of the obviousness of it is that they are surrounded by R three already. They are mostly industrial parking lots. I think the only correction here is that we will be making the change to that, to that west, to that part of Broadway. It's just a little bit of a map fix. And the other part is the, along the light relics, the light rail down by Morton Place, can it between West Side and Kennedy. One change that we are making is, can you guys see, I don't know if you can see my cursor or not. But but the area that's east of Kennedy, this blue area here, we will not be including that. We did, that was really just an error on, on my part when I was drawing. And so when we went to go make sure that everything was correct for the umpteenth time, we just saw that that was an error and we're just taking that out. That these are, those are mainly R one zones that we hope will be fixed when we do the R one zoning. So this is the master plan consistency part of everything that we just kind of went through. The map on, on the right, I think, is a little overwhelming, right? There's just a lot of callouts. But I'll walk you through this kind of really quickly. You can see that there's a call out on Kennedy. You can see that there's a call out on Summit. You can see that there is the call out on Mallory. You can see the call out on Old Bergen and the Ferris Triangle. And this is the primarily the residential changes. So some of the quotes from the master plan. One was that we should be looking at these areas, we should be considering them as small-scale neighborhood centers. The master plan suggested that we should consider these to go up to five stories, mixed use and appropriate development densities, supporting street level retail. And then further on, and the land use principles, it really goes on to say that, and this is what we heard a lot, especially even, even our small vision meetings. Residents have expressed a need for retail uses that serve everyday needs such as grocers, restaurants, cafes, convenience retail, financial, dry cleaners, laundromats, allowing these small-scale neighborhood retail uses and potentially larger footprints in more locations will help reinforce Jersey City's residential neighborhoods by providing shopping and services within walking distance, increasing pedestrian activity and opportunities for social interaction and adding to the viability of the neighborhood. Kind of what I was circling back to what I was talking about before, we highlighted in the master plan that I'm just going to read it. Jersey City's most socially and economically vulnerable residents tend to live in areas that lack essential services and are auto-dependent. Providing neighborhood retail services within walking distance of all these residents will strengthen the neighborhood vitality and provide options for different types and scales of business. Expanding permitted uses can incentivize more retail owners not only to upgrade and make aesthetic improvements in the public realm. And together with strong site planning can enhance the overall look and experience of these areas and make them as friendly to the pedestrian. So I think the cutoff here was as also the automobile. Areas where we're also looking at, that we talked about with the RC two. Just a little bit more about that. Called out, you can kind of see, we actually called the plan, the master plan called out specifically Ocean Avenue, Danforth, Old Bergen, the junction, which we are not going to be talking about today. Hopefully dealing with that further when we look into neighborhood commercial and R one in our next phases. It also called out the density and scale of the Congress Street, Ninth Street and Garfield Avenue, which is around the light rail station specifically, should be preserved or upgraded depending on where the scale is currently to small neighborhood centers. So again, those small neighborhood centers are five-story mixed use. The planner they called on two focus things. One is the small-scale neighborhood centers that were focused on community commercial. But also the centers that were focused on transit-oriented notes, right? And so Ninth Street, Congress Ninth Street is one of those transit-oriented nodes and Garfield Avenue as well. Some of the other changes that we will be making that were recommended in the plan were to zone open space. So believe it or not, the Bergen arches are not currently zoned, parks open space. So we will be going ahead and zoning that park open space and preserving that. We also saw when we were looking at the zoning of the lower heights, that Sergeant Anthony Park was not zoned open space. I believe it was on medical and R three. And so we will be zoning that, oh, no, yep, yep, this medical and R three. And so now we'll be zoning that as a park's open space, obviously. Doing that extra step of preserving it, obviously it's already secured by Green Acres, but now we're going to do the extra step. You can see, I know this is a little out of order. But if you're looking at the insert, the correct the zoning map, you can see that we're one thirty-nine meets Palisade. There is orange for the RC two, yellow for the RC one, and then it goes back to orange for the RC two. In meetings that we had with the Heights Association, originally our proposal was to do all of the Palisade Corridor is RC two. Uh, originally, our proposal was to do all of the Palisade corridors RC two. Um, but recognize that some of these um buildings, especially within. Um, the areas that were called out were primarily three story um blocks. Um, and so we agreed to keep those as RC one, which are, which is the three story zoning. The other ones were primarily four story um buildings, so RC one zoning would have been inappropriate for that. And this is just some of the floor plan amendments, um, again, the pitchers are just calling out what I had told you about. Um, removing that ours three um. Resoning from the eastern side of Kennedy. And the only thing that we also wanna add, you know, I think Matt and I went back and forth about whether this had actually pan out to be something that was um. An issue or not, um, but you know, it's really important to us that Jersey City does not have single family zoning. And even though we might not be in a situation where RC one, RC two, or RC three. Will create a density that will only allow for one unit. Who knows? So we just wanna make sure that there's not an instance where that happens. And even in the R one right now, right, the minimum of units you could have in a lot regardless of the size is two. Um, and then that is it for me, the rest of it is Matthew Ward.
All right, thanks, Tanya. I don't know if we wanna get a question in or any questions to what you just presented.
I just wanted to say, wow, go ahead.
Um, Tanya, I'm I'm not following some of these parking requirements. Um, so how are we requiring point three spaces per bedroom? In a commercial district with the round floor commercial.
So we are, um, we don't have any parking standards uh for commercial in the RC one. Or the RC two, um, those commercial parking standards um typically read as, you know. Uh, X amount of spaces per square footage and what we, what has, what has been really common that we do is we exempt the first five thousand square feet. And in the RC one and the RC two, we're not seeing, you know, commercials uh. Footprints that are that large anyway, so we are really just doing parking standards based on the residential uses, is that what you mean?
Yes, so that parking won't be. I heard in R one C and R two C. Am I correct? I mean, depending on the the lot size.
Chairman, I'm not clear if. If your question was, so it sounds to me, and Tanya, tell me if I'm wrong. The commercial will not trigger a parking requirement.
Correct.
With chairman, I, I understood your question to be. The residential will trigger a parking requirement. Of point three per bedroom. Where is that parking physically?
Oh, uh, sorry, apologize, yeah, so uh. On lots that are under fifty feet wide in the RC one, it is just behind um twenty five feet behind an active. Um, frontage, doesn't have to be a storefronted, but it does have to be an active frontage. We didn't uh create any uh kind of design standards or any standards like that for under fifty feet. And the RC two, I think, I don't think we changed uh the placement of that.
Yeah, so um the, the RC zones, uh, RC one and RC three. Are similar in some respect that they're a bit more restrictive on where parking goes. Um, and there's actually um some areas where if you're mid block, it's just prohibited. Similar to how we do it in in uh neighborhood commercial. Um, and that was partly an outcome of speaking with community groups. So like on Summit Avenue, um, curb cuts are prohibited unless you are a corner lot or have access to a side street. And uh, that's different in RC two, um, which wasn't changed and uh. And parking really kicks in after you get up above a a certain lot width. Where you can uh start to handle. Retail in front with parking behind, so even on um your interior lots, not your corner lots. Or in addition to corner lots, uh, you 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 can see parking in RC two.
So then to illustrate that, it would be a fifty foot wide piece. With essentially a driveway next to the building. That allows you to access the rear where the parking would be located.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, understood, gotcha.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen, were there, or were there any other comments?
This is a follow of a, so the the difference between the RCs is when it is restricted, right? So on lots that are less than twenty five feet wide in the RC one, parking is restricted. I believe in the RC two um.
It's prohibited, actually.
Under fifty feet, so you have to have fifty feet or more in order to have parking. I have to call up RC three, I believe it's twenty five feet, it reads similar to the RC one.
Yeah, unless you have access to an alley.
Right, right.
Cause we're talking about area of downtown with hollies.
Right, and where is the RC three parking curb cuts are prohibited. On Brunswick or Monmouth, in the RC one, we provided a little bit more flexibility where we used the word discouraged. Um, recognizing that some of these areas are not necessarily right on top of mass transit.
Uh, Chair, uh, Tanya, if I may, um, so for RC, uh, for example, on West Side. A five story um project would require. Um, the zero point three per bedroom would would apply for the parking.
Yep, as long as um it was fifty feet wide or more.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen now.
Matt, just before you, you start, this would probably be a good time to uh recognize that it's nine fifty eight. This will probably be uh most, probably will be our last application of the night. Um, I don't know if we wanna go through the process right now, starting to carry item.
Um, I, Chairman, I did reach out to uh some of the attorneys for these projects and they, they wanna stick it through. If uh anyone's changed their mind, they can raise their hand at this moment, um, we could bring them up, but um, that was the communication I received.
Okay, um, I mean, it is our policy not to open anything new after ten, which would be in one minute, so. Uh, they're welcome to stick it out, um. But I do wanna advise any members of the public that are here for any other applications tonight, they will most likely not be heard. And um, they'll be carried to a a later date. Uh, that we can't really determine until we speak to the attorneys for the applications. So maybe they wanna check the data portal. I don't know, I don't know how quick that gets updated, Matt. As far as the next agenda, next agenda coming out this Friday.
Yep.
Okay.
Should I continue? All right, so we have a lot of text here, but um, just to bring it back to what we've already discussed, some of the other changes we are proposing. In this phase one are changes to definitions, uh, which I'm gonna get to a little bit later, but we focus on the building line. And lot lines or lot types. We also uh uh propose changes that were posted to the data portal regarding chapter. Three, four, five, sixteen, when site plan is required. Uh, we revised those thresholds for triggering site plan. And um, the really, the aim there really is to uh uh lessen. Economic and timing burdens for additions or smaller buildings, signs, storefronts. In other projects, uh, proposed without variances, so obviously variances will still come to uh the zoning board for really, really small projects. Or uh may come to planning board depending on uh the scope. Uh, we also had some uh temporary COVID nineteen uh language in there regarding leasing banners, which we've changed to permanent standards. And and just. Uh, worked with the zoning division to kind of um take a look at where there's some errors in. In um, small additions actually being categorized as major site plans. And even small alterations or changes to parking. Uh, or loading facilities being uh major site plan, so we, we just added a a bit more of um. More thresholds that rounds that out and uh we think it will um be uh. Beneficial to some of your smaller um. Uh, developers or even homeowners that are trying to do additions or or completely build a new build uh for themselves to live in. Um, we also have uh a lot of changes to Article Five, which is fully amended and restated. Um, now it's not completely um uh across the board, brand new. Uh, we ju- we just thought it was easier to do that because we. One, we were adding new zones, but we updated and renamed zones, and we also kind of reorganized. Um, the chapter to just make sense with how we see phases of uh uh moving forward. Um, some money, uh, I'm sorry, some minor alterations that we made outside of. Uh, what Tanya was discussing was, one, we removed the seven story conditional height. Uh, for uh senior housing in R one, uh, which was a recommendation of the master plan. And we adjusted commercial parking standards in many zones, uh, which were out of date. Uh, or just uh, or just missing or 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 just not addressed. Again, we reorganized districts, so R one is now listed under three forty five forty one. For all those um LDO geeks out there, it's no longer forty. Um, and uh, R one A, R one F, and R one W are now listed under three forty five forty. The overlays, which were kind of all over the place and mostly under supplementary standards, are now all brought together. Um, under three forty five fifty nine, including the affordable housing overlay, which I'll touch upon in a moment. And uh, we uh, Tanya spoke to briefly, but we also um added some new standards. Uh, to supplementary zoning chapter, uh, regarding encroachments, projections, um, which I'll get to about related to building line. And we incorporated uh terrace standards and and that was done uh at the community's request. Okay, uh, affordable housing overlay, so this is a new overlay that we're uh um introducing to you tonight and to the city. This would apply.
For a hot second.
Sure.
As a part of the inclusionary zoning, um, when we did the rezoning, we met with fair share. And so you'll see in all the RC one, RC two, and RC three language at the bottom where it says compliance provisions. Um, and we uh were able to calculate the lot size where it would have triggered. Or been able to produce fifteen units, which is how the IZO reads, if you're getting fifteen units. Uh, is when you become qualified for the IZO, and so if your lot was a certain size that would have given you. Or will will give you fifteen units and you were R one prior, you're automatically required to do the IZO.
Um, and that's a good point, we also um, we also ran this affordable housing overlay lay by Fair Share Housing. And uh, they were in support of it, um, and actually gave us some feedback that was incorporated. Um, but the purpose of uh this overlay is to um. Apply to all residential areas or residential mixed use districts citywide. And uh, it's incentive based uh overlay to drive the development of affordable housing. And we do that by a couple of things. That are, I would say, at the opposite end of what the IZO is set up to do. Uh, so one is that. When you, when a property owner elects to do this overlay, um, they have jurisdiction before the planning board. And instead of a units per acre standard, they have a density regulated by the building envelope. Um, but the height standards, the setback standards, coverage bulk and other lot standards are still applicable. So it's not a uh, it's not a bonus in height. Uh, or 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 bulk in any way, it is simply the envelope in which is permitted in that zone. Can now be uh. Separated in in whatever unit configuration uh that property owner wishes. Um, and what then applies is a uh housing affordable set aside. Uh, so this affordable housing overlay still uses the IZO as a framework, so the ten percent and fifteen percent. Um, set asides will still apply based on the IZO tier map. And uh, the housing that's produced here that's affordable is still regulated by uh UHAC. The Uniform Housing Affordability Controls, which are a state law and our local chapter one eighty eight. Uh, new specifics, which are not in the IZO, um, but are in this overlay are a a unit mix requirement. So we're uh above a certain amount. Uh, there's a, there's a kick in of uh two percent of of the units or three bedrooms. And there's also a kick in of uh thirty percent max on studios. Created through uh any project that elects to do this. Um, there's also an increase in the, specifically in the canal crossing redevelopment plan area to fifteen percent. Um, that's mostly because that plan right now requires a nine percent um. Affordable housing set aside of all projects that include residential. And uh, if you wish to elect to use um this overlay in that area. Uh, instead of one percent increase, there is a six percent increase to your affordable housing set aside. And we also strengthened the fractional affordable unit clause. Uh, that was in the IZO. We've just clarified that the contributions for any fractional unit. So if like um, you're required to do one point four affordable units. Um, that point four would have, would result in a contribution to the city uh toward the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And uh, we clarified that those contributions based on that point, point one to point four. Anything point five and above actually results in another unit, but anything point one, point four. Uh, ranges in that thirty six to seventy two thousand uh range. And so what does this kind of yield or do, or or what would it impact? Um, and so we provided, or we prepared this um R three analysis. Um, so density versus bulk is what we're calling this and. Um, there, right now, there's a disconnect between permitted heights and what building uh height the density will yield. Um, so these graphics show uh two scenarios, a sixty by one hundred and a one hundred by one hundred lot. And right now, this zone allows for an eight story building. But based on the density that's applied uh on that um, on that zoning. Uh, we would, we would say that you would only result, it would only result in a four story building. Um, in both of these instances, uh, so there's four stories of unused permitted bulk in these zones. Um, where we're missing out on on housing abundance, we're missing out on housing affordability and opportunity. Um, and by applying this affordable housing overlay. Uh, we're closing, uh, or providing a solution or closing the gap on this unused permitted bulk. So in the example and the tables on the right, um, it kind of breaks down what that would mean, so. If uh, a eight unit building. Was built and it was eight stories on a sixty by one hundred lot, those units would be two thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. We use the average of nine hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, which would jump the number of units from eight to twenty four. And it would uh yield two affordable units and a seventy two thousand uh. Contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Uh, and if you apply that to an one hundred one by one hundred lot, the increase would be from twenty units to forty five units. And uh, from zero affordable to five affordable units. So uh, we think that there is a a great amount of opportunity in R three. Um, which allows for, uh, there's this big disconnect right now, uh, which we just don't see ever getting built. Moving on, this looks like a lot. But we just listed out all the definitions that we amended. So there's new definitions, twenty new definitions, ten major revisions, and about twenty-seven minor revisions or clarifications. And we focused or like, we kind of had like two orbits when we were doing this first phase of definition changes. So one, the first one is building line. And I kind of bolded the other definitions that are kind of in that same orbit. So building line is a definition that we are fixing and we saw it as a problem because, and this is actually a diagram that's going to be embedded into the LDO. But right now, this building right here in the middle or middle right has a bay that touches the ground. And the way that our city planning office or the zoning division would categorize the front yard setback for this building would essentially be zero. It'd be to this bay. What we're, one of the big kind of shifts we're doing, and the reason why we're doing it is because the way we're zoning right now is that we're not incentivizing this type of, these type of architectural features on buildings because we're measuring to them. So they're losing all this floor area around this bay window under our zoning. So no one does it, or very little people do it. You see this version a lot, which doesn't get counted towards their front yard setback. But this version you'll never see. And certainly these versions or this one over here on the far left. So this diagram is showing how we're going to re, re-classifying the building line to not include these projections or these encroachments as we define them in the LDO. And so this context really exists all over the city. But I wanted to highlight One Street, Stedman Parkway, which actually shows a great variety of this, of these encroachments. So you have a small entry with a stair, a stair that's either turned or coming straight out of the street as shown on the right. A little bit up the road, you have the same kind of condition, but now they have an enclosed porch on the second story. Some with more windows than others. You have just a simple open porch with a stoop. You have like, almost like a patio or on your right here. Or you have these, these bay windows, which again, this would be measured, the front yard setback we've measured here rather than to the door. So we're reclassifying it as the door. Another great example, some porches on this road. And this, this last example, which is very interesting, we have an open kind of balcony that's supported by this, this overhang. And then down the road, we have this very elaborate sort of outdoor terrace area in the front yard. All that you don't see now in new builds. And that hopefully through these definition changes, we're encouraged, we're going to try to encourage them to come back. So another orbit here is the lot lines or lot types. And you'll see I highlighted two, the diet, I highlighted diagrams or introducing some more diagrams here to just demonstrate these definitions a little bit better. And then I've highlighted the other definitions here, which are related. So this is the lot type diagram in, that's proposed to be in the LDO. And the way you can read this is the, there's a key on the bottom. And we're calling out interior lots as being the ones that just have one frontage and are not a corner or a through lot. And then corner lots in B here. There's three examples on this prototypical block. Cap lot, which is a new definition we're introducing, which is actually goes from one street to the next with three frontages through lots on parallel streets, which is the way our definition only reads now. And then through lots on intersecting streets. So this is the example of that. So adding to that, adding some more context or, or coloring in that, the lot type diagram is the lot line diagram where we now apply lot line designations. So for example, on the cap lot, which is a new definition, we have three frontages all along the road. And then the one in internal lot line is a side lot line. And so what that means is that, or what we're trying to show through this diagram is what setbacks do you need where? So for your standard interior lot, you have a front, you have two sides, you have a rear opposite the front. One of the big departures of our current zoning and what we're proposing here is the corner lot, which was identified in the master plan as being an issue. A longstanding issue. And a lot of cities treat this differently than the way we do. Where we currently say that on a corner lot, the shorter frontage is the, the shorter furniture of the two is the front. The opposite of the front is the rear and the others are sides. Many other cities treat both street furnages as a front and the others as a side in some more suburban context as a rear. What we're posing is that on corner lots, we have two fronts and two side lot lines. And what we're introducing at the same time, because we are aware that of light and air and, and issues with light and air and trying to create and respect rear yards. We're introducing something that was embedded or highlighting something that was embedded in our definitions, but not necessarily well-defined or, or even very clear. We're highlighting the rear lot point. And these diagrams on the right are better show those. So on the top is the lot width and depth diagram, which is really speaking to these three different lots, a corner lot, a through lot with an intersecting streets and a cap lot. Each of these types of lots typically have the corner, the through lot could maybe not in some strange instance, but a corner lot, through lot with intersecting streets and cap lot, each have a rear lot point. And it's the furthest point where, or axes where side lot lines meet opposite, you know, where the, the, the intersecting streets are. So this is, from this point is where a rear yard setback would emanate. And to diagram that we had, we introduced this rear yard diagram. So it's very typical in R1 or in other zones to have a rear yard of thirty feet. So we diagram from this, on this corner lot, which is in this diagram, it's roughly fifty by one hundred. We drew thirty feet from the rear lot point in either direction and the rear yard that that would result. So it's this kind of pie-shaped quarter. As we're introducing percentages for a rear yard setback, it begins to have a different impact on corner lots and it's an impact or an intended consequence or attended outcome of the percentage setback requirement. So and I'll get to it in a moment, but we have, say in our new RC one or RC two, we have a, a thirty percent lot depth setback requirement. Well, this X distance and this Y distance times point three would result in a rear yard that looks something like this. And that's what we're diagramming in our LDO with that. And so to apply that in a little bit more or to see how that would work in the real world, we pulled some examples together. So this first example shows a cap lot. And it shows up it pretty well. The downtown main public library. You can see that it's built in the C shape above the ground floor. So it's, it's kind of reflecting what we want to see as far as what the rear lot point will produce. And what the rear lot point is trying to get at or, or respect is this, this shared established rear yard or this shared common rear yard that you see on these blocks. And to apply that to corner lots, we found, we wanted to highlight two kind of interesting examples. So this first one's at three two seven Commute Park Avenue. It's project currently under construction. Image on the top left is taken in July twenty twenty-two. You can see what was there in twenty twenty, all those actually going under demolition here. And here's an aerial on it. So you see this corner lot. Its neighbors next to it runs the opposite direction facing the side street. And I assume that this is about a hundred by maybe thirty, forty, fifty, I'm not sure. But the end of this, their rear yard just abuts the side of this building. And the real established rear yard and for this block is actually further over to the right. Now this building is actually getting built pursuant to the Morse Canal Redevelopment Plan. And the minimum yard requirements for this, this zone were in effect and haven't changed since nineteen ninety-nine. And I thought it was very interesting that in this small section of Jersey City, we were trying to get at maybe not the more nuanced way that we're trying to propose with this rear lot point. But trying to get at the fact that four-corner lots, this rear yard setback is actually less important. So I highlighted, we had a front shall be determined by prevailing setbacks, a side zero and a rear yards. Under our current definitions, rear yards, our corner lots have a rear yard, right? Well, they rode out a rear yard setback for corner lots specifically because this is more of what we would find. It was, a corner lot was not getting into this established rear yard. It was only wide enough to hit the side lot line of the building behind it. Another example, and this is an interesting one because it's, first of all, it's on Columbus Drive, but it's also a historic district. So at five one eight Jersey Avenue, you can see this building under construction. The old Carolina's laundromat. So this building's going up and this aerial over here again, shows this condition where a corner lot is meeting a side lot line. And what was very interesting was that this application received a certificate of appropriateness by the historic HBC and zoning board approval back in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen. And this is an excerpt from the resolution. So Jersey City Municipal Ordinance requires a minimum rear setback thirty feet. The parcel has zero feet of setback, which will remain unchanged by the application, maintaining a thirty-foot setback and less and less than 100% building coverage would create a hole or gap along Columbus Drive and would create and would be an aesthetically unpleasant and unchar, and uncharacteristic, uncharacteristic for the subject area. So that's something that we're trying to get at is that you can apply either a lot depth percentage or a, a rear yard setback in feet at different times. And and it's in some cases more appropriate for, for you to have this lack of a gap up at the street level or at the street frontage. And, and handling corner lots this way allows us to do, do that without variance. Just to highlight some of the kind of leftover definitions that we added, like accessory dwelling unit, which was advocated for in the, the master plan. We, we took a look at the definition of family and are kind of moving away from that definition, focusing more on, on housekeeping unit or household. We updated our agriculture definitions, which actually spoke to scheduled drugs. And now that we have adult recreation, marijuana, and, and we wanted to make sure that there wasn't any sort of mix up in how we say that you can't do, have a scheduled drug, even though, because it's scheduled still federally. Just clarified some other definitions on very minor types of fixes like curb cut. We just said that sometimes curb cut is only one word, not two, and so on and so forth. Now to just wrap it up, what I talked about tonight regarding master plan consistency. So these amendments regarding definitions, when Sam Platten is required and the fully restated Article Five, we found that they are consistent with our master plan. And we pulled out these two sections. So we are on page one seventy-seven and one seventy-six of the land use element in chapter five. So under other LDO items, definitions and standards, it says on their second bullet, cleanup land use definitions, and in particular address the corner lot definition. Third bullet, consider adjusting minor site plan thresholds so that small apartment buildings don't always have to come before a planning board. This could increase affordability by encouraging developers to comply with zoning standards regardless of hardships and seek ministerial approval before moving straight to permits. The fourth bullet, review and update supplementary zoning standards as zoning provisions are updated or new zones are created. And then regarding the affordable housing overlay, we pulled this section over here, affordable and workforce housing recommendations. And it just speaks to the need for affordable housing and the fact that the city should encourage the continued development of a variety of housing at different income levels, whether it's restricted or not. And, and just also, it just paints a picture of how ADUs could be a, a tool in that mix. With that, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Anybody, any questions? Any questions for Matt?
Okay.
Well, I have a question in the, well, is it for Tanya, one or the other, for the alleyways that we talk about in the definition?
Yeah.
I was, that kind of caught my attention. I guess most of the commissioners know a lot of the alleyways in downtown Jersey City used to be my playgrounds. And I see on the definition of one of them, it's just a walkway. What happens to the other ones that'll be in use for drive, driveways like, for example, would be Maxwell Street on, off of Jersey Avenue. It's a, consider it a, it's a street, it's an alleyway, cars go through there.
Yeah.
They plan to eliminate alleyways out of the, in the plans or?
No, no, not at all. I think it's just, it would be reliant on whether or not it's a vehicular alley or walking alley would depend on the width.
It's not talking about alleyways that five, we, I mean, we just recently.
No, I think the only, the only.
Lodges, they have garages in some of these alleyways.
Yeah.
How enough to drive a car in there. How enough to drive a car in there.
Yeah, the only difference would be that, um, uh, I think for a alley, uh, I'll have to double check because does, uh, get somewhat confusing, but a regular alley that's vehicular, um, any of those roads could, they shouldn't be treated as a through street, but they could. And, uh, we're just being a little bit more clear that with the walking alley, they are, they are definitely not uh, through, through lots, uh, but I can look into them a little bit more closely.
Oh, I mean, don't get me wrong. They, they, a lot of them, look, tell.
Yeah, there's, there's.
They don't keep them correctly, you know?
Yeah.
Abandon a lot of emotions.
No. There's no effort to get rid of vehicular alleys. I wish the city had more. Um, they're, they're definitely helpful, so.
Okay. I don't think someone else looked at that. And, um, yeah, that is it on that part of. My other concern was with the two family homes and the parking space. More, um, even a smaller size, we're, we're saying that even if you had a smaller size, you should have at least one parking space, but at least the two units. Some of these people are just parking where it's mostly on the sidewalk. That's some something, you know, that no, they're not parked on the, uh, they don't have a driveway. But they take. I find those, some of them dangerous because they have to park where people into playing and crossing on the sidewalk. That's where they should be. On the sidewalk. So that was, as we go forward, I'll keep looking into that, but otherwise everything else on this, so. certification on the alley.
All right. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Okay, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. Anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Promoting Ollie.
Hi, Ollie. We almost see you. It's just red.
Hi.
Um, you have your, your privacy screen. There we go. All right. I just want to swear you in before you speak. All right. If you could raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Sure. Nathan Oliver. And, uh, N A T H A N O L I V E R. And my address is twenty-five and one half Hopkins Ave, oh, seven, three, oh, six.
Thank you.
All right, Ollie, we have three minutes for you.
Um, I just want to say thank you very much for all of your hard work. I live in the lower portion of the Heights, very near, um, Sergeant Anthony Park. So a lot of really great, exciting things I saw in this plan tonight about, you know, declaring Sergeant Anthony Park. Open space, that's, that's, uh, really beautiful thing for me to hear. I really appreciate that. Um, the best parts of my neighborhood are mixed-use buildings that are three to five stories. Uh, so I'm really excited about the idea that we are going to be promoting and building more of these, retail spaces, making more space for more neighbors, um, to move in. Uh, the worst part about my neighborhood is cars. And so if anything, I'm a little disappointed that the parking requirement is so high. Um, if, if people need a place to store their car, they should pay for it, just like I would pay for a storage space if, if I didn't have enough house. Um, so I, I really, really appreciate all the hard work that you've done. I feel like maybe I'm the far end of one spectrum, so, uh, I, I imagine that you've actually hit a pretty good balance here. But I just wanted to say thank you very much for, for, um, bringing more mixed-use, uh, three to five-story buildings online in my neighborhood. That's, I think, something that's going to really improve the neighborhood, um, in the decades to come.
All right. Thanks, Ollie. Appreciate it. All right. Once again, anybody that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Promoting Jeremy Sutton. Sorry, Sutton.
Hi, Jeremy. Let me just swear you in. All right. If you could raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Uh, Jeremy Sutton, J E R E M Y Sutton. Uh, S E T T O N four zero seven Ogden Avenue, New Jersey City, New Jersey, oh, seven, three, oh, seven.
Thank you.
Mr. Sutton, good evening. I have three minutes for you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Commissioner. I'm a resident on Ogden Avenue in the Heights. I have two major concerns related to the proposed amendments to the land development ordinance related to the corner lots. Our first concern is with the amended Article One definition of quote-unquote lot widths and quote-unquote lot depth for corner lots, which would be interchangeable, potentially, uh, introducing unexpected consequences. Not only this is removing the ability to orient a corner lot, it, it seems that Article Five zoning ordinance are not written to account for such a case. The fact that, uh, city planning staff had to update their initial amendments and clarify how to determine a lot width of a corner lot for specific ordinance in the RC zoning attached to that. As a potential unanticipated issue, it seemed that under the proposed amendments, corner lots in the R one zoning would require having front yard setbacks in both, on both fronts. Was this intended to be that way? If so, how would this apply to a standard twenty-five by one hundred feet corner lot in that zoning? Trying to circumvent the definition ambiguity at the zoning ordinance level is just, uh, um, adding another level complexity while leaving potentially unexpected consequences with other related ordinance. Why not update the Article One definition by distinguishing the front lines of a corner lot? Having the primary front as the lesser frontage and the secondary front at the other frontage would make more sense. And this would allow to clear, uh, clearly identify lot widths along the primary front line and the lot deaths along the secondary front line, uh, for a corner lot. In the forty email I received sent today by Tanya Marion, the director of city planning stated, quote, "The way we are treating corner lots is consistent with how other cities treat corner lots," end quote, and provided a link to Philadelphia zoning code definition, including, quote, "Graphics on lot definitions similar to ours," end quote. When looking at this graph, it is pretty clear how to determine the lot width of a corner lots since it's actually oriented. So I'm not sure how it is similar to the proposed amendment to the corner lot definition as stated by Tanya. My second concern is with the amended setback requirement for, uh, corner lots in the RC zoning. I understand the need to reduce some of the current R two D rear Yard setbacks requirements towards the secondary frontline of a corner lot in order to limit get, uh, effects at the street level. However, it doesn't make sense to do so on the higher level. In the proposed adjustment, a four or five-story wall could be built on the sideline of a corner lot twenty feet away from the rear of an adjacent residential building in the R one zoning and up to twenty feet, twenty feet higher than the height of such building. Moreover, especially for corner lots located on, on, at the south end of a block in the RC zoning, having such a high wall will cast shadow in, inside that block affecting property on both lines. Why not?
Thank you. That was.
Oh. Can I finish?
No, that was your three minutes, sir. We allow three minutes.
Well, I mean, those are pertinent issue and I want to make the record that I proposed this to the, uh, Jersey City staff. And I proposed this on July seventh and July seventeenth, I didn't receive anything. So I should have the right to finish what I'm saying here because they never responded to my inquiry.
I'm sorry, sir. We have three minute public comment.
Can I finish?
No, that was your three minutes, sir. Okay, if we could, Matt, let's move on with public comments, please.
Promoting Kern Weisman.
Hi, Kern. I'll swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Uh, sure. It's Kern, K E R N, Bestin Weisman, W E I S S M A N. And five, seven, six Palos Lata Avenue.
Thanks.
Kern, good evening. Noah Drill. We have, uh, three minutes for you.
Yeah, so I, I'm actually speaking, uh, and I apologize. I'm actually on my phone at a remote location right now, so apologies for any clarity here. So I'm speaking on behalf of the RNA Development Committee. Um, so I just, I for a little bit of flexibility, but I'll, I'll get this done as quickly as possible. Um, so a, a few points, uh, the first point I want to make is that I actually appreciate, um, many elements of this corrective zoning that's being put in place. And, uh, also appreciate the fact that Tanya and Matt had, uh, met with the community, met with, uh, the various neighborhood groups a couple of times and, and were able to receive input via both email and also via, uh, conference call. So that's very much appreciated. Couple of items I want to point out. First of all, there was a, I believe, maybe a misstatement before about the parking in the RC two, which is currently known as the R, R two D. Uh, currently, uh, the parking is not permitted on any lot that's fifty feet or less. Uh, and it, it's only permitted if it's over fifty feet. So I just want to clarify that for the record. Um, and in addition, one suggestion that we had that I didn't see in, in the RC one was to simplify the parking requirements a little bit by saying that you can only allow parking, parking would not be permitted on any lot twenty-five feet or less. And that would potentially address maybe one of your questions there, uh, as well about how to, how to simplify that language and encourage the commercial uses of those, of the storefronts, right, on the ground floor. So any lots that are twenty feet, twenty-five feet or less prohibit parking. And then you could potentially have some situations where you're allowing parking on, uh, on larger lots. Um, I did, uh, do appreciate that there's been some consideration for certain blocks that where curb gate, curb, curb cuts don't make sense like Congress and of Franklin and Summit. Uh, so that is appreciated, but I think the language could be simplified a bit more to, uh, clarify and, and really discourage and prohibit a lot of these, uh, Bayonne box style curb cuts that, that we see proliferating around the Heights. So I think, I think we actually agree on that if we could just make that a little simpler. Um, the, the next point I want to make is about unintended consequences of upzoning. So there's a couple of elements here, especially in the RC one where we're upzoning on the corners. So if you read the RC one, it says that the three-story with ground floor permitted use of, of commercial, great idea. Um, it's allowing now the corners to be four stories. So that, I didn't see any studies that showed that those, um, corners are already four stories. Therefore, it would be true corrective zoning. It sounds like those are being upzoned on those corners. My concern is, and the concern of the committee, is that you would have a situation where you're encouraging the demolition of those buildings to put up four-story buildings with that increased density that's being allowed. Uh, and then the, the, the last point I want to make is about the corner lot, um, real, very simple. Shouldn't have two, uh, lot width definitions, should have a single lot with definition that's consistent with other municipalities. So right now, if you read it, it's allowing the lot width to be measured on the lot depth, hundred feet. So that would basically allow, uh, all calculations of corner lots to be considered a hundred foot deep. Uh, you know, if they were standard twenty-five by a hundred, that's inappropriate, I think, and very confusing. Um, and then the last, uh, one other point for the committee.
I gotta, I gotta cut you off.
Yeah, okay. I, I got you. I'll, I'll say that last point. It was the most minor point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
All right. Promoting Orin. If the commissioners would like us to address any of those comments, we can too.
Sure. I think, uh, maybe Matt will address them at the end of public comment.
All right.
Got their commissioners are great.
Hi, Orin. I just want to swear you in before you speak. Okay, if you could raise your right hand.
You got it.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Did we lose Orin?
I.
I think.
Yes.
I heard yes.
Well, he's unfrozen.
You're on your way to your round.
Yes. Yeah, so we'll be.
I heard the yes, and now if you could just spell your name and give us your address, please.
Yep, uh, my name is Orin Auslin, O R E N A U S L I N. Uh, my address is two forty-nine New York Avenue, uh, unit three oh two.
Orin, good evening, buddy. Uh, we have three minutes for you.
All right, I'd just like to say, uh, good evening, everyone, and I'd just like to thank uh, the members of the committee and, uh, the, the team from city planning for that very thorough explanation and, uh, history about zoning and different kinds of, of buildings that, that have been going on in different neighborhoods throughout the city. Uh, I would just like to call in, uh, calling in favor to support, uh, these changes to the neighborhood. Um, as a Heights resident, you know, I really, really appreciate the walkability of the neighborhood, being able to walk to, uh, many different stores, um, throughout the neighborhood safely and all close by. And I would hope to, you know, that one positive outcome that comes out of this zoning change is that, uh, we encourage more of this kind of development to occur in the Heights. Um, I'd also say that, you know, it's encouraging that the city is looking to expand on density for the neighborhood. I think adding density really gives us an opportunity for folks, uh, to maybe move to the Heights and to Jersey City at a more affordable price point, which I think is the goal of a lot of resident share in the city. Uh, you know, rents keep going up, and I think one way we could help, uh, tame that is to, uh, encourage some more apartments and entry-level homes for people to move to. Uh, so it's almost I don't think anyone's, uh, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Orin. We appreciate it. All right. Once again, anybody that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Uh, promoting Becky.
Hi, Becky. I just want to swear you in. All right. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Sure. Uh, Becky Hoffman, one fifty-four Ogden Avenue. It's B E C K Y H O F F M A N.
Thank you.
Ms. Hoffman, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for your time. I know these evenings are very long, and I also appreciate the time of a city planning. Uh, I know we may not always agree, uh, but I think everybody's intentions are good, and that's, uh, the spirit which I offer my comments, and I'm going to keep them really brief and focused on one particular area of the map, which is, uh, Congress Street. This is supposed to be, as Tanya had mentioned, corrective zoning, and it does seem that that particular section is much more of an upzone situation and going to, uh, RC two and as opposed to RC one. Um, so my request would be to leave that to the fall where we can have a little bit more conversation and, uh, discussion about it among, even among the community. Uh, that particular area has been, has had a lot of, uh, accidents. Uh, the streets are narrow. There's very, you know, there's a lot of different things happening there, and there's a lot of many different types of housing. And you put up a chart earlier, Tanya, in your presentation that showed the existing density there. And in Congress Street, it is, in that block is lower than the other ones on that map. And it's much, and even I think the Franklin Street is higher, and that's going to be RC one. So the request is that at the very least it be RC one, but more critically that maybe it be postponed because it's not a corrective zoning issue. It is a zoning change. And, uh, I thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Promoting Terry Ang.
Hi, Terry.
Hello, my.
I can hear you, I can see you, I just want to swear you in before you speak, okay, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Sure, my name is Terrence Eng, T E R E N C E, last name E N G. And I reside at four oh five Ogden Avenue, apartment one.
Thank you.
Mr. Eng, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank the panel and everybody for allowing me to speak, and also the, the work of the, the planning organization and for the presentation. I just wanted to speak on one of the topics of the RC two rezoning as a particular concern with how the lot widths and fronts definitions are, are brought up. As spoken from previous Kern Weisman and Jeremy Sutton, the concern of how the calculation of the rear setback would affect neighboring, neighboring properties. And would actually reduce the certain amount of air and light that, that we currently receive. There was a previous proposal that, you know, the neighborhood had discussed with the planning committee, which talked about a developer built, putting up a building that would effectively have no setback and be a, a large wall to our neighboring properties and reduce the amount of light and air. I just wanted to bring to the, the panel and, and the committee, just to reconsider how the property lines, how they're, they're considered and how it would reduce the already existing rear setback in the space providing air and light for the neighboring, neighboring neighbors. That's all, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eng, we appreciate it. All right, once again, anybody that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hand.
Promoting someone labeled Samsung. I don't know where they went. Okay, I'm going to continue. Promoting Paul Ametuso.
Hi, Paul.
Good evening, everyone, thank you all for your time.
Hi, Paul, let me just swear you in before you get going, all right, if you could raise your right hand.
Sorry.
No problem, do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Sure, Paul Ametuso, P A U L A M A T U Z Z O eighty-three Sherman Place.
Thank you.
Uh, Paul, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Good evening, I, I would like to say as President of the Persian Field Neighborhood Association that I am excited about the zoning changes that are coming to certain areas, but I do concur with Kern with corner lots. I would like them to be taken more on a case-by-case scenario where as if the full building on the entire footprint of the lot does not affect neighboring buildings that it's, would be okay, but if it does, then consideration be taken for what will be built there. And then as far as the corrective zoning for former commercial districts, I just want to know if that's going to be extended citywide, like around the corner from me on Manhattan Avenue, there are many storefronts that are closed up and have been converted to residential. Also downtown Jersey City, I grew up in the Hamilton Park neighborhood. And you had Brunswick Street, Monmouth Street and Cole Street, which were all res, uh, commercial, you know, storefronts growing up as a kid. And now most of those are taken away, and that neighborhood can really use some more commercial stores back in there because it is kind of a desert right now. It, it's in that back corner of downtown with not many businesses around. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Anybody else, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody else from public?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public.
Okay.
Okay, motion made and seconded, public is closed. Matt, one thing I do want to talk about is public outreach on Congress, on upzoning Congress. Was, that was discussed with the RNA in a meeting, or was it just you know, kind of presented?
Yeah, so we did have a, a meeting with a, a small group put together by the RNA and Sergeant Anthony. And that, some of the outcome were some text changes as well as some map changes to the Lower Palisade. We did discuss Congress. There was, I think, one member that was in attendance, which was in a difference of opinion from some of the folks that spoke here tonight. But it was discussed at that meeting.
Okay.
And we went through the reasons why we thought the designation for RC two on that portion was appropriate. Mainly its proximity to the Light Rail Station. That, that's the, that's the basis for which we think the R two C, the RC two zone is, is appropriate.
I, I mean, I agree, I think it's appropriate there. I, I just don't know if anything changes if we hold this off to the fall on, on just that Congress Street section. You know, like I said, I, I agree that that should be in our, our C two. Anybody else want to weigh in?
Sure, I mean, if I, if we, if we hold off on that part, I mean, would it change anything? I mean, where, is planning, planning on doing more committing, community meetings for them? I, I, I'm, I'm okay with moving forward, I understand why. It should, it should be RC two district now, formerly R two, R two D, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I know planning always does their, their best on outreach. I don't know that anything changes if we hold off to the next round of you know, land development ordinance changes. I, I'm comfortable moving forward with it tonight, maybe City Council might have a different recommendation, but I'm comfortable. That's it for me, Matt. Anybody else have any questions for Matt? Or Tanya?
No, did you want Matt to sort of speak on some of the things that people brought up? I didn't know if you were wanting to do that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Matt, is there anything you want to address during public comment?
Yeah, and Tanya, correct me if I'm missing anything. So to recap, well, we already discussed Congress Street, but regarding Kern's comments regarding four stories in the RC one areas. On Summit Avenue, there are some four-story buildings and they're typically on corner built, they're on corner lots. I think there's, there's two or three that come to mind. We did promise to get some information regarding that over to River View. It was just a way I'm vacation last week, so I, I apologize on my lack of timing, but I will, I'll proceed with getting them that information. Others, some other RC one areas, like Sterling Avenue is actually a five-story building on that on, in that area, with the most of the other buildings being two stories currently. On Old Bergen or, or Ferris Triangle, there is a four-story building. In fact, I believe there's two four-story buildings, so they're dotted around and they typically are located on corners. Where, which is a development pattern that is, is pretty typical. It's one that we echo in, in Journal Square as well. Where, where the taller buildings are typically located on corner lots. Regarding curb cuts in the RC one, I think the request from Kern was to, and from River Views was to prohibit curb cuts or parking altogether on lots that are twenty-five feet or less. Which is difficult when we're applying it across the city. And some of the solutions that we implemented from the community meetings that we did and the talks was to prohibit those curb cuts on in, interior lots. Like ones that don't have access to side streets. So like on Summit Avenue, on Congress Street in RC two, we did that upon request. It's done on a portion of Mallory Avenue. But the reason why we weren't prohibiting it was that there still is, I mean, there's now several decades legacy of R one in some of these areas, so you see a lot of two-family homes with parking. And we chose not to make those variance conditions in RC one, where we see much more, what do I call incursions of R one over the last several decades. Regarding lot width, I think that that comment was addressed to RC two. So an outcome of the community meeting with RC, or the, yeah, the community meeting talk with RC, River View to RC two was to clarify that on corner lots, the shorter lot width is, controls the height. And that, that's a, is actually how the R five was written. So I don't think that there's any kind of confusion with it. It was, it was something that we already had in place in R five, and now we're clarifying and applying that same language to RC two. And I, I know that there was comments put out there regarding these changes to corner lots. I think that I spent a lot of time on regarding corner lots, and if you have any additional questions, we can go back to those slides.
I don't have anything additional, anybody else?
So Chairman, I just, go ahead, Commissioner.
I've got a question, but just with regard to Jeremy Sutton. I mean, he's the one who brought up the corner lot and then the rear setback. So I don't know if we have, he seems to have reached out, he's, he stated on the fifth and, or the sixth.
Yeah, he also put on the record that we emailed him today. And I know, because I was on email chains, that he shared several emails with Mallory, Clark Sokoloff on staff and received very timely email responses. And, you know, we pride ourselves on, on communication. But, you know, there is a limit, I think, to the amount of time that we can spend with question after question. Especially when we believe we've already answered them.
Santos, you, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, so first to, to Matt, Tanya and the rest of the staff. Great job, I mean, the hours, the work, the research, it's, it's tremendous, and, and I commend you guys, I, I really can't express how thorough of a job. Chairman, the, the goal and the charge of the board is to look at these proposed changes and determine if they're consistent with the master plan that we just recommended to the governing body. And then we would make the recommendation to the governing body if we felt appropriate that these are consistent. So while I appreciate everybody's comment and opinion, you know, Matt, Tanya and the rest of the staff have put in countless hours and to try to look at these one-off situations and say, well, on this piece or on that piece, it's just not fair, it's not the way the planning works, it's not the way definitions are crafted, it's not the way zoning is implemented. That's exactly what the purpose is of the MLU L are for and what the variance relief is for when they come to the board and they say, look, I have a unique piece of property that doesn't fit into the puzzle piece, and here's why. That's why this board and the zoning board are able to grant that relief. So I think that to try to make it fit every possible scenario out there is just an impossible task, it'll never happen. I think what planning has done is they've studied the areas. They've, I, I heard them testify that they were out there looking at all of these sites and going street by street, which is just, I don't have to tell any of you, I mean, you walk every street in the city, that'll take you a year, let alone putting together all of this information. So I have to trust and believe that these comments were heard, these comments were thought about, these comments were discussed amongst staff themselves. Some of these comments were probably brought up by staff themselves when trying to put together this framework. And this framework is the culmination based on all of the effort that went into the master plan. So I think that the work is there, the research is there, the reasoning is there, it is, it is justified, and to give the presentation that was given in the past two hours, that's, that's small potatoes compared to the amount of hours that went into putting the document in front of you. So I understand the public comments, I understand the questions and concerns. And I just think that if the board is comfortable and staff is comfortable with where they're at and doesn't want to look at it themselves based on anything they heard tonight, then that's my two cents, I think the board can, can make a, a recommendation appropriately.
Okay, thanks, Santa, agreed, I agree. All right, so with that said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve the review and discussion of proposed amendments to the zoning map and land development ordinance regarding district boundaries, zoning and design standards, Article five, definitions three forty-five dash three forty-six, site plan thresholds three forty-five dash sixteen, and creation of the Affordable Housing Overlay. Amendments include fully restating Article five, but are not limited to the creation of RC one district, RC two districts formerly R two D, RC three district formerly R five, and the expansion of PO district and R dash three district. And recommend to, to City Council favorable recommendation forward to City Council for formal adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for adoption, recommendation for adoption by City Council.
And Chairman, just for purposes of the record, Dr. Gonzalez, that recommendation is that the proposal is in and consistent with the master plan, is that accurate?
That is correct.
May I interrupt? We just put, we put on some floor amendments within the presentation, I just want to make sure for the record that, that you are also okay with that.
Yes, my motion includes the floor amendments that were made.
Agreed.
Okay, with that clarification, Vice Chairman, Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I want to just, wow, I mean, I said, wow, when, when Tanya had first. Yeah, I want to just wow. I mean, I said, wow, when Tanya had first spoken, just looking at the gravity and the magnitude of the whole, you know, presentation and how long it took you as as Council Lampy said, this this takes hours. And the thing that I think people don't realize is that these are, you know, what you did here are things that are going to completely and and actually very deeply impact the city of Jersey City. You guys are making changes that are going to be amazing for the city, for Jersey City in the future. And I don't know if you guys know that. And I know I've known you guys for a long time, but you guys, the planning, not the commissioners, but I'm talking about the planning staff are are really amazing. And I I never cease this to amaze me how amazing you guys are in terms of what you're doing for the city and for the state. So and of course, the commissioners, if we're here, it's eleven fifteen now and and we're here because we want to make a difference as well. So I commend you on that awesome presentation, that very detailed presentation. I learned a lot actually that I did not know before. And for the public, you know, I I get it that you want to you want to be heard and we're here to hear you. But remember that there are rules and it's clearly stated at the beginning how much time you have. So it's important for you to have your points succinctly made and in in time in a fashion that is timely so that we all so that you all can be heard. So with that, I vote I.
Commissioner Torres. Oh, we don't hear you, Commissioner.
Okay, like always, what we wish you to master plan is just to visit how the work that you, the staff and zoning and planning working together. And you said it again. Really did a good presentation. With that, I'm going back and forth on the, just keep it as simple as does this match the master plan. And and yes, you do follow suit with that. Well, I do recommend it's awesome though that you walk these neighborhoods. Oh, great, because you get that the people city that were not in an office only, you're in the neighborhood. Just like everybody on this board represents this in this neighborhood. That's what I like. With that, I vote I. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, so I read through the all the documents and I think it's a very thoughtful, very inclusive document, especially reaching out to all the neighborhood associations and to the Fair Share Housing Committee and bringing that level of attention to affordable housing. I think with regard to addressing the public, you know, Mr. Sutton made his point. I hear that. I hear Council Lampy's comment. I would say this is is that in the way that we treated Mr. Brown, who was not speaking to the matter, we attacked the issue, not necessarily person, not that any person was attacked. I think as as a body, we can respond a little bit more to the point. So his point about rear setbacks, we could easily just said X, Y, Z, or we communicated, it would have been over. And I wouldn't have mentioned it. But I think overall, it's a great job. It's corrective from the hyphens used and the changing of letters to numbers grammatically substantially. It's a well-reviewed document and well-presented. Good job. I vote I.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Very, very informative presentation. Thank you, Tanya and Matt and the rest of the planning staff for always your forward thinking. And these amendments on the master plan, certainly these amendments are consistent with the master plan and provide a lot of clarity for the resident of Jersey City and any developer as well. Again, I want to say thank you. Thank you again. Hats off to you guys. Thank you for all that hard work. It probably took a very long time to compile all of that, but you got the job done. Thank you again. I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I vote I.
Commissioner Allen.
That was a very, very thorough presentation. I appreciate the fact that you guys had old pictures from nineteen whenever I laughed when Tanya said we in nineteen seventy-five, I didn't vote you on the board in nineteen seventy-five, but I mean, it was great work. The only thing I just learned all of the zoning maybe two weeks ago and you changed them. So this time next year, I'll get everything. So I'm gonna vote I.
Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I I want to congratulate you guys. And I know the time that went into this. I know as soon as we adopted that master plan, you guys went to work on this and and there were a lot of hours put in. On Facebook somewhere that Director City Planning was running all these streets at one point. I don't know how far she got. She tried. But yeah, I think all of these amendments are consistent with the master plan. I think it brings a lot of the existing conditions inconformity. I think it does a lot for affordable housing. Anytime we can streamline the process, I think it's a win. So I'm one hundred percent in favor of that. And, you know, the bottom line is we're trying to create walkable neighborhoods. I saw a number of my neighbors on here tonight. And, you know, I see these people on a regular basis when I'm out walking my dogs. So you know, that's what it's all about, living in Jersey City. It's the walkable neighborhood, that fifteen-minute neighborhood that we're trying to try and achieve. I think this puts us way more than one step closer to that goal. And I cannot stand behind this enough. Or to recommend to city council.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right. All right. So the time is eleven eighteen. We had a number of attorneys that wanted to hang in there. Do we want to bring them up and carry them now?
Yes.
Are they still around? Oh, yeah, they are.
Matt, for the record, I received an email from James McCann that his two applications, he wished to carry with preservation of notice to August ninth. So that would be for three oh three First Street and for Fifty Day Street.
Okay.
I'm assuming he logged off the meeting, so I just want to relay that.
No, actually, actually, he stayed on. We just promoted him.
Well, there. Wow, he hung in. All right. Sorry to steal your thunder after all that wait.
All right, Jean, we got you.
Yeah, I just wanted, were you talking to me? Yeah, I just wanted to get the the legal credits to Phil listening to this thing. Very good. Thank you, guys.
Why are you?
I don't have to go to Iickle courses now for the next.
Are you worried about graduating, Jean?
I am.
So we get CEU credits with this, huh?
That's right.
Okay, so Jean, we got you for one thirty-six Summit Ave, right?
Yeah, you do.
That's your only one? Yeah.
Only one I have.
All right. So we'll carry you to a date to the, what's our next one? August ninth, I think it is.
I think so.
Check the calendar real quick here. Now that's the weather. Okay, so we're gonna carry case P two two dash zero eight zero for one third is a preliminary and final major site plan amendment for one thirty-six Summit Ave.
It's amended, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The course.
All right, I don't see Chuck Harrington here, but I did receive an email from Tom Lean regarding agenda item twelve, case P twenty-one dash one six one. And they asked to be carried to August ninth with preservation of notice.
Okay, so P two one dash one six one site plan amendment for four oh one to four twenty, I'm sorry, four oh one and four twenty-five Washington Boulevard is carried to a date certain August ninth.
And Mr. McCann, are you there?
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can barely see you, but we hear you.
I agree with Mr. Paulino. That was quite an education I just got. You guys are awesome. I consent to have my two cases carried carried with preservation of notice to the next meeting.
Okay, gotcha. Get off the phone while you're driving there and we'll call those into the record. Item fourteen is case P two zero dash zero eight five is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for three oh three to three eleven First Street. That's being carried to a date certain August nine. And P one nine dash one nine five is a preliminary and final major site plan for Fifty Day Street. That's carried to a date certain August nine. Okay, so I think that was everything. I'll entertain memorialization, please.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. I think I have four. First resolution is resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City approving preliminary and major site plan approval with waivers and a minor subdivision applicant Newport Associates Development Company for preliminary major site plan approval, minor subdivision approval property is at seven seven zero Washington Boulevard, formerly one fifty River Drive, block seven three oh two, lots three dot one one, three dot one two, three dot one six, and three dot zero five to be three dot zero five, three dot one six, three dot one seven, three dot one eight, and three dot one nine. Case number P two one dash one six three. Resolution number two is case number P two one dash one five eight. Address is two ninety-seven to three oh one First Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one two seven zero two, lot one. Decided on Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-two, memorialized on July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. This was an application for a minor subdivision with C variance. Resolution number three is resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P two two dash zero two five. Address is four thirty-six Central Ave, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two two zero two, lot three, decided on Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, memorialized on July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. This was an application for conditional use approval. The last resolution I have is resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City approving a one-year extension of the approved preliminary and final major site plan with deviations. Case number on that was P two two dash zero seven six, H P Lincoln Urban Renewal LLC and five forty-five and five forty-three dot five Manila Avenue, block eight eight zero one, lots three and four.
Awesome. Do I have a second? I'm sorry. I need here. Okay, do we have a roll call, please?
All right, here we go. Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi. All right, Santa, I'll talk to you about your webcam at a later date.
Chairman, if I may, I did my budget presentation last week and I shouted out the commissioners because that's a part of my presentation. I did have to put on the record how many meetings both all my boards had. And in twenty twenty-one, Planning Board had twenty-three meetings, which is about a hundred hours, which is two and a half weeks of full-time work.
Wow.
At least when my wife, at least when my wife fights at me, I tell her it's because we need to pay the bills. You guys do it without any compensation except, I guess, some, you know, angel wings. And, you know, Matt and I don't say it enough, but we definitely appreciate all the hours that you guys put in here, sometimes week after week to do this really important work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya, that means awesome.
I'll get out on one of those runs with you.
Just for me, you know, being plugged back into the planning board and seeing how you guys are doing this is amazing. I mean, our city is on fire. So thank you and keep up the great work.
Cheers, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Back it.
All right, motion and second. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Good night.